Good evening. It's 7:00 and we have a public hearing which will be followed by a meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. So I'd like to convene the public hearing and if anybody would like to comment on the proposed ordinance to lease the Squire Farm. Is there anyone here for the public hearing? Apparently not, so I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Ms. Clark, are we okay to go?
I apologize. Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Do we have any staff reports at this time? Libby Tyler, Director of Community Development?
I just wanted to announce that we were successful in obtaining two grants from the Federal Home Loan Bank and one will be used for down payment assistance and that's about $58,000 from Federal Home Loan Bank and the other will be used for renovations to our transitional housing units and this was a grant submitted by Kelly Murkowski, so I wanted to let you know about that success and to congratulate the Division.
Thank you. Any other staff reports at this time? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting and that would be November 12, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Ammons, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next up is public input. Just as a reminder to the audience, if you wanted to speak to the council, you'll need to fill out a white comment card. They're available on the table at the back of the room and if you wanted to submit a written comment, you can do that as well to the city clerk. Actually, it's not indicated on any of these when you wish to speak, so I'll just assume you want to speak now and if you don't, we can wait till it comes up on the agenda. We have Chris Evans?
I'll wait till the...
Well, actually, it's the next item on the agenda, so... This is on the Traffic Stop Task Force.
Chris Evans, Ward 4. Thanks again for enduring public input. I guess in our last episode of November 12, I would have to ask the council what exactly you voted for. My understanding was that we were gonna...we voted for an independent task force comprised of a number of factions, including the police, including the council, including some staff, but also included some members of the public, some with expertise in stats, some with expertise in the law, some with expertise in police procedure, and the original ask on October 7 was for members of the NAACP, a member of CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, a member of the League of Women Voters, a member of the ACLU, to also serve on this task force to study the traffic stops. The idea being behind that was to create an...I don't know, some independence as well as some good faith for the public to see that there was due diligence being exercised, that nothing was being hidden, nothing was being controlled. Since that vote on November 12, we've got a memo from the Chief of Police suggesting that we not have such an open forum and the mayor has been in contact with various groups within the government to make sure that there's only certain kinds of people serving on this task force. So I guess my question is, what exactly did you think you were voting for and what was going to be the composition of this task force, as well as to ask that the council, if nothing else, ensure that these task force meetings be subject to the Open Meetings Act such that the public can attend and that there be public participation during these meetings with the task force. I really think that there is enough expertise out in the public and there's enough interest that we can do a really, really good job with this and I think you want to do a good job, but if you're...if it begins to look like you're trying to control who's on it, if you're trying to keep the information away from people, then it's not a good look. So tonight, I would ask at the appropriate time that the mayor explain why she doesn't think there ought to be a task force and two, why the Chief of Police does not want the public involved in this task force. Thank you very much.
Steven Portnoy?
Thank you for opening this to public discussion. I'm Steve Portnoy, President of the Champaign-Urbana Chapter of the ACLU. What I'd like to speak to is what I think is the critical importance of giving this task force a mandate, not simply to study the problem, but to deal with it. I think the discrepancy...well, I don't have to think. The discrepancy is there and as long as it's there, there are going to be people who feel they are being set aside for extra police work. They're being subject to being more...stopped more often and as long as that's the case, no amount of education or internal changes is going to affect this very serious problem of a feeling that people are being put upon and not only that, there is a disparate effect. If you're stopped more often, you're going to be paying more fines and one minority should not be required to pay more fines than anyone else. The disparity is there and it should be reduced and I think that must be one of the mandates given to this task force and in part, that's why I think the task force must go beyond what currently exists and must involve community input from a very wide area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Portnoy, can you answer a question, please?
We studied this at great length before...
No, I'm asking for a reduce the disparity. It's very simple.
Okay, could I just ask you, were you aware of the study and what the output was?
Yes.
And that was open to the public? I mean, you know, everything that we do is open to the public.
Yeah, I'm asking that you give the task force a mandate to reduce the disparity. That's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Not...that's basically what I want, what I'd like to see because I think this is clear.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Okay.
I think we have another question here. Charlie?
Steve, how comfortable are you with the underlying census numbers, adjusted census numbers from Northwestern for this?
Well, any statistics are subject to error. As a statistician, I don't find that there's anything to object to in previous studies or the way they're done. There's not a great deal you can do without a formal experiment and I don't see how to do a formal experiment, so, you know, in a sense, the statistical nature is unlikely to get very far and that's why I feel very important that there is a discrepancy, a disparity, and it should be addressed and this disparity has consequences. It has consequences in the community and in the people who are affected.
If you make different assumptions on the census numbers, though, you get different discrepancies, including...
Well, but none of them go to zero and none of the discrepancies...
Actually, at least one of them does.
I haven't seen one that actually went...disappeared completely. The basic stop information seems to suggest that there's a fairly large discrepancy in what would be expected and it has to be explained away on various grounds, but I've never seen one that got rid of it.
Would you agree that no one has done an extensive categorical data analysis with controlling for a number of factors on this data? It's all two by two?
I don't know of any.
It's all by...it's all one...you know, it's all two-way tables.
Yeah, I don't know of anyone who's tried to, but I must say, I don't think it would be highly successful at convincing anyone.
Yeah, but then, how do you go from a two-way table to making...to saying something is significant? That's basically saying that, you know, that's the preachers and...the Baptist preachers and county population example. It's correlation without causation.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that's part of the problem, that there's no way without a very formal experiment to really make much of an input that's going to convince people who are already convinced one way or the other.
That right there says what I think is the real problem. People are convinced already without having a real experiment to base their information on.
I think that's true, but, you know, the fact that they're convinced means that something has to be done about it and I can't think of anything to do other than reducing the disparity. If that's reduced, then...
It becomes a sociological issue and not a scientific one.
I think so. I think so. That's my opinion, is that we need to address the fact that the community feels that it's being disproportionately affected by the policing that's going on and the only way I think that can be dealt with is to address the statistics that come down every single year the same way.
Yeah, but the statistics may not be reliable.
They may not, but that's what's convincing me.
And they're not based on a real experiment.
But that's what people read and that's what they're convinced on and they see it in their communities. They see people stopped. They see more often, or at least they think they do, that blacks are stopped more often. This seems to be the way people see it and until that's changed, I think it's going to continue to be a problem and so that's why I'm saying a mandate is necessary to say, you know, don't worry so much about underlying causes because it's unlikely that we can get statistics that would deal with those. Deal rather with the problem, which is the disparity.
I believe the mayor had a question?
Yeah, I want to ask you another question. The gentleman who actually formulated this statistic, when he looked at the Urbana data, said it was too small a sample to really do a study and then I wanted to ask you, do you think that there's a bigger problem in Urbana than there is in Champaign or in the county?
No, I don't.
Okay, so why do you want to just study Urbana, is my question?
Well, we're here at the meeting today, at this meeting. All the cities should do so.
I mean, would you support having a comprehensive study?
I would support that too.
Because Urbana's the only one that's studied it so far and we're the only one with the civilian review board and this particular statistic seems kind of dissonant with all the other information that we have about the Urbana Police Department, so that's why I am concerned about just focusing on Urbana.
Well, I'm focusing on Urbana because I believe that the task for...you know, that we asked the Urbana Council to form a task force and they agreed to do so, so I think that that should be done and its mandate should be to reduce the disparity. This, I think, would go the furthest toward addressing the problem. Otherwise, it'll continually be studied, continually everybody will disagree and continually nothing will get done. In order to do anything, you have to somehow focus on actually changing the way police stops are made on traffic and other minor offenses.
Or changing the way the statistic is calculated.
No, the statistics, I think, have nothing to do with it.
Okay, but that's what's arising.
And the state is going to publish those statistics every year. Those are what's going to affect people, if anything does.
The state publishes them.
And people are going to see stops that way. They're going to notice it and unless you can come back and say, "There is no discrepancy, disparity," then I think it'll continue to be a serious problem and you have to...basically, the police and the city has to convince people that they are not...that there is no disparity and I don't see how that can be done without changing the way things are done.
Eric?
There are more stops among blacks. That's...you know, however you try to explain that away, you can't. It's the way that...you know, that's what the statistics show and that has to be reduced.
Do you think...
For whatever the cause underlying it is, it has to be reduced.
So...
Eric?
So, in...so I could imagine a couple of ways to reduce the disparity. One way might be to focus patrols on students coming and going from the Chicago suburbs and search their cars for cocaine because there's a lot of drug traffic and so we'd pick up a lot of...we'd pick up a lot of white students by doing that.
You could address this disparity by stopping more whites. That's true.
We might be able to address the disparity by reducing police patrols in high-crime areas.
Or reducing their stopping traffic offenders.
Or reducing their stopping cars in high-crime areas.
Yeah, for traffic offenders.
I guess there's a question about whether that would...might reduce public safety and that should be part of the discussion. One of the questions that I've had in looking at the study and that I have not been able...you know, you're a statistician. One of the things that I know, all the statistics bear this out, is that until people get to be my age, I'm at the age now where the statistics turn around, but until people get to be my age, the younger the driver is, the more dangerous the driver is. That holds up to about 50s or 60s or so. So, and then at 75, which is my age, suddenly it turns around and goes the other way. But one of the things that I have not seen in the statistics is the demographics of the two populations and if anybody knows that, I'd like to know, is the African-American population demographically skewed to be younger than the white population in Urbana or in Champaign-Urbana? I didn't see that addressed in the study and if anybody has any ideas about that or any knowledge of that, I'd like to see that. I went through the study as carefully as I could and I did not see that addressed at all.
Nationally, there is a slight larger, younger people among the black population, but it's relatively small and wouldn't explain the kinds of differences that the state statistics show. I guess if you put enough different things together, you might be able to reduce it somewhat, but, you know, the statistics, I think, are so large that they're not likely to be highly affected by those kinds of things and, as I say, I think the important thing is actually making it clear to the people that blacks are not being stopped more often than they should be and I think that's going to take some changes.
So you're...do you have a hypothesis for the reason for the discrepancy?
Well, I think a large part of it is where the patrolling is taking place, but I think that patrolling for traffic stops need not be so tied to where other crimes are committed. The two things are rather different and I think that might take care of a lot of it, just simply enforcing traffic stops differently than other kinds of things, which they should be. I mean, they're not the same kind of crime as robbery or theft, so they should be handled differently and can be, I think. That would be one possibility. There may be some other things that could be done too.
Do you have a question, Charlie?
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, Steve, that actual piece was analyzed in that previous study on the 2007 to '09 data or whatever, 9 to 11 data that was used and there wasn't a huge relationship, there wasn't the expected relationship between where crime was happening and stops. But again, the modeling done was so simple and so, you know, with so few dimensions in it, that it's hard to say whether it's a real conclusion or not and that's part of the problem with this. Nobody has done a good categorical data analysis on this data, which is very doable. You just plug all of the variables in and go to it.
But you'd need to get some extra data on exactly where the stops were.
You've got Geocode. You've got Geocode. You've got a pretty good...you've got a pretty good idea of where these things are and nobody's doing the right kind of analysis on this and it may be that Urbana's sample is too small, but it could probably be done on a larger sample.
I will say that I don't think that it's not...it's a good idea to study it too, but I think that a mandate to reduce the discrepancy is needed and that's...you know, I think that's what's in...
Well...
It's important. It's a perception, and I said this several weeks ago, sociologically, it's a perception of a discrepancy and it probably, I would...and I'm going to talk about this later, it probably did exist.
Okay, we'll continue this discussion when it comes up for discussion. I have one more person who wishes to have public input on this topic. Thank you, Mr. Portnoy. Dural Cruz?
Could I speak at the time of the issue if there are other people with other issues to speak?
We'll see. Yes. Randy Gustafson regarding the annexation of Wildberry Acres. You'll have five minutes to speak or less, if you prefer.
All right. This is about the annexation of Wildberry Acres subdivision in the city of Urbana. I don't agree and I'm upset. I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me on this and if I get out...but I got everything written down, so here we go. "No thank you for the annexation agreement with the city of Urbana. The owners of Wildberry Acres subdivision had signed an annexation agreement with the city of Urbana stating all lot owners will agree to join in and consent to any petition for annexation of their lot within 30 days of the property, becoming continuous with the Urbana city limits." Urbana city limits is continuous with Interstate 74. Wildberry Acres is on the other side of Interstate 74 and when I'm reading this, I want you guys to, each and every one of you, put yourself in my place and my neighbor's place, okay, about all this mess that we're going through. It's not right, but here we go. "That date of August 7, 2000, of when Interstate 74 slash Wildberry Acres subdivision came continuous with the Urbana city limits has been over 13 years. The city had their chance to file a petition and failed to do so. I have not owned any property at Wildberry Acres subdivision till the year of 2003. I have no city water. I have no city sewage with the city of Urbana." Should focus on these two main issues and when those two main issues, two main services come with my property, then I will agree to the annexation agreement. Assistant City Attorney Kurt Borman sent me a summons stating that I have 30 days to respond. If I don't sign a petition to annex my property into the city limits, then he was going to ask the court to do it for me. All right. "Mr. Borman was going to ask the court to order me to pay. The court costs, also in his letter, he put, 'These costs can be lessened if I sign the enclosed petition before a public notary.' I feel that I'm being bullied and pushed on this issue that I do not agree to on this petition because it is not reasonable, fair, and is being discriminating." Hear me out. "Why should Wildberry Acres subdivision be annexed into the property...into the city and not being offered water and a sewage line when other properties have city water and sewage and not...are not annexed into the city? I am a fair and reasonable guy. Why can't this city be the same? The city of Urbana is violating my constitutional rights of not offering water and sewage to my property. Again, myself and my neighbors are being discriminated against and that's...but here...the city of Urbana is doing a money grab and not wanting to improve Wildberry Acres subdivision's quality in life." The only thing I can say is, if people of Urbana can hear me, please do so and voice your concern.
You have one minute, Mr. Gustafson.
Okay.
You have one minute left. You can continue.
I'm done.
I'll move to give him as much time as he wishes. This is a property rights issue.
And I'm, you know, I'm just exercising my right of speech and...
Go ahead.
What? Am I saying something wrong?
Go ahead.
I'm just exercising my right of speech and again, I'm not a public speaker and that's why I'm twitching around and I'm nervous and everything, so I don't know what else to tell you. That's where I'm coming from on this.
Any questions for Mr. Gustafson?
Mr. Gustafson, you're doing just fine. A couple of questions for you, though. So you don't get sewage from the UC sanitary district and you're...so you have a...
I got my own septic tank and leach field.
Septic tank and you have your own water well then?
Yes, a well, yes.
And a well, okay. And...
As well as the other five neighbors of the Wildberry subdivision.
And when you bought your property, you were not aware that there was an annexation agreement?
No, I didn't. No, uh-uh.
That wasn't part of the...
No, the previous owners...
It might be buried in the fine print somewhere then.
It might, you know, nothing was said to me about it.
Okay.
That's God honest truth and city never sent me anything till now and, you know, I'm getting all these letters in the mail and, you know, besides, you know, trying to work and all this and then I get all this, it's just like, you know, and like I said, if I get the water and the sewage from the city, then I think that'd be all fair.
You would get police, fire, Public Works?
Carl Fire District is right down the road and the county does an excellent job plowing the road. I gotta leave the house at 5:00 in the morning. They're right there, plowing the road. As far as a library card, my kids are gone, grown, don't need it. They have no problem with...
Which school district are you in there?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Which school district are you in there? The St. Joe or the Urbana? School district? It's Urbana School District? Urbana, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor?
I just wanted to say, we don't have city water. It's a private water company, but I'm kind of surprised that the subdivision wasn't connected in some way to the sanitary district because we have a rule now...
You'll have to speak into the microphone. I'm sorry.
Okay, we don't have city water. It's a private company.
Okay.
So, you know, so, but I'm surprised that you were not connected to the sanitary district because that's the rule now, that we won't allow a subdivision...
Thank you.
...unless there's a connection, so I don't know what happened at that point. But, you know, it was agreed upon by whoever owned the property earlier that there would be an annexation, so that's what you're facing right now, somebody else's agreement.
Well, that was back in '94 and it came about in the year 2000 and here we go.
Any other questions at this time?
And another thing I'd like to point out is that the septic system is not cheap nowadays. If I have to replace that thing, we're talking eight, $12,000 and then I'm going to have to pay city taxes and it's just like, it's not fair, you know. That's way up. That's where I'm coming from. I've just been honest with you about all this.
Eric?
Mr. Gustafson, have you heard anything from the city about the possibilities of connecting to the sanitary district and connecting to the...
No.
So that hasn't been a discussion with the city, anybody from the city, as yet?
No, nothing's been said. No, sir.
The...so, do you have an estimate for the lifespan of your septic system without, you know, further work on it?
You know, that's a tough call. Sandy Hamilton, I don't know, had hers done three or four years ago and it was a big expense. Now, as far as to the answer to your question, I don't know about the lifespan on it, you know, it's...I have a guy come every four or five years, pump the thing out and... and, you know...
So, I, I, yeah, maybe later when this issue comes on the, on the agenda, if we could get some input from Public Works as to what, you know, we can offer you in, in that regard. Where, where, I, I, well, I'm only speaking for myself, but I, I don't think the city is interested in, in taking from you without, you know, providing services, so...
Thank you, that's all, that's all I asked, yes.
So, we'll, we'll, but I, I don't know quite how that, how that transition takes place and maybe we can get some input from Public Works on that. When the issue comes on the agenda, I'll, I'll request that.
And I, I got other neighbors here that like to speak, if that's okay?
Yes, we have their cards.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next up would be Sandra Hamilton, speaking about the annexation issue. Speak into the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Sandy Hamilton and I pretty much feel like Urbana's just gonna get more taxes out of us. I mean, mine were gonna go up quite a bit. And like Randy said, we don't have city water, we don't have, I mean, we have septic tanks, but, and I did have to get mine replaced and it was about, close to $9,000, which I don't have. But, that's really all about, all I want to say. I, I just don't see any benefits to this right now.
Any questions for Ms. Hamilton? Dennis?
How far do you live from Steve's house? The gentleman who we just spoke, it wasn't Steve, it was Steve Gustafson?
I live next door.
Next door?
Yeah, I'm on the...
On the same side of the street?
Right.
On the south side?
We're all on the same side of the street.
Okay, all right.
I don't know how they put the people on the other side.
Mike?
I'll ask the same question that Charlie asked of Mr. Gustafson. Were you aware at all when you purchased the property of this annexation agreement?
I, I can't really remember. I probably was, but we bought the lot years before we bought the, or put the house there. So, and it's, a lot has gone on since then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mason Armstrong about the Wildberry annexation. Okay. Warren Lowry?
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Mary Lowry? Regarding the Wildberry annexation.
Hi, so I'm Mary Lowry. And I live, so it's Grandy, then Mason, then us, so we're on, we're all on the same block there in Wildberry Acres. And I actually went to a meeting that was held, I think it was in September, where we were invited to come to talk about the services we'd be getting if we were annexed. And so, I went and my neighbor to the east side, him and his wife were there, but no one else from the subdivision was there. And they clearly told us that water and sewage, sewer services were not gonna be offered to us at all. So, they made that clear at that meeting, that we would not be receiving those services. And so, we said, "And what are we getting for being annexed?" They had a list of items and so, professional fire protection, so even though we know that Carroll Fire Protection, the Carroll Fire Department is closer than the Urbana Department is to us, we're gonna end up getting Urbana fire. They said we'd get professional police protection. I don't know why the county isn't considered professional, but that was what it said. And when we talked to the Public Works about the roadway, our roadway, because so our roadway, it's a dead end street, the north side of the land, or the road is actually county residences. They're not being annexed, they didn't have an annexation agreement on their property. So, that will remain county. And so, our question was, if the road's half county and half Urbana, who's gonna take care of it? And they said that, basically that Urbana would take care of the, keeping the road. And so, we asked, "Okay, so what does that mean?" And they told us that the road would be examined once every three years. Now, currently, the county oils and chips our road every summer. And Public Works person said, "Well, we'll look at it once every three years." So, that's like, again, nothing we're getting and the road's gonna be worse off in three years than it is getting maintained every year right now. We also asked about plowing because, as Randy just said, we usually get plowed right off soon. And I, I don't know where we will end up on the plow list for the city of Urbana, but I'm sure a dead end road that actually you have to go through the county to get to is not gonna be high on the plow list. So, that's a concern of mine also. Then again, they did talk about the library services and back in 2000, I would've loved to have library services because my kids were, you know, three and four then. Now, they're 15 and 16. So, the librarian talked about all the great child services, they have the library, none of which we need. In the past, we've actually paid the out of district rate to get a library card. And I've paid out of district, park district fees every year because we weren't in the district. And so, I've been paying these fees. Now, we knew there was an annexation agreement when we bought the house, so I'm not gonna say we didn't, we knew about that. And it just said that you would sign a petition within 30 days of the property becoming contiguous. I never knew the property became contiguous until this all came up again. I didn't realize that Berenger Commons counted as contiguous, so I didn't do it, I didn't even know it had happened. And now, it, it says I will sign within 90 days. Well, it's been 13 years now. So, now I'm reconsidering whether, we don't really want to do this. We're not gonna be getting anything out of it. We've already paid out of district fees for the last 10 years for our kids. We're not getting sewer, we're not getting the water. The road, I don't know when it'll be plowed. And the road's only gonna be even examined for, for maintenance every three years. So, what benefit is it to us? And, and if, as you say, if, if the city of Urbana did want to give us water and sewer, how much is that gonna cost the city to run water and sewer across the highway to us? I'm, I'm guessing it's not gonna be really cheap. And does the rest of Urbana want to pay for that? When we don't even need it or want it because we all already have well and septic?
You have one minute, Mrs. Lowry.
No, so I, that's everything I sort of had on my list to say, so...
Mayor, you have a question?
I, I don't think it's gonna make you feel any better, but water and sewer are paid for directly by the customer. They're not included in the city taxes.
Well, it's not even to us, though. We couldn't add it if we wanted it.
I know, but I'm just saying, you know, you're not losing out because everybody pays for it individually as a household to the sanitary district or to Illinois American Water. They don't pay it to the city. It's not included in taxes. Just a clarification.
Oh, okay, but so making those services available to us would be charged to the water in the sewer district? Or their companies?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, it wouldn't be the city.
If you got it, you would pay directly to the water company and if you got sewer, you would pay to the sanitary district. The city does not do those services.
Okay, so if they have to run it out to us, we're gonna have to pay for it?
Well, if you want it, you'd have to pay for it. But the sanitary district, you know, you wouldn't, you would just pay what everybody else pays to the sanitary district. I don't think they'd charge you, maybe they'd charge you the construction, I don't really know. But I'm just, as I said, I'm surprised that the sanitary district...
Somebody's gonna have to pay for it, that's what I mean. I don't want to pay for it, I don't think the city of Urbana sanitary district wants to pay for it.
Well, I mean, if you don't want the water, you won't ask for it and you'll just keep using your well.
Right.
That's, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, last for this part of the discussion is a comment from Reverend Dr. Evelyn and Bishop King James Underwood of West Tremont Street. They do not wish to speak at this time, but they are still concerned about the sewer problem in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Next on the agenda is a discussion of the Illinois Department of Transportation Traffic Stops Study. For background, this is a continuation of a topic from two weeks ago when citizens came and expressed concern about the appearance of racial disparities in traffic stops in Urbana. And do we have a staff report or anything from the staff on this topic at this time?
Please, Chief.
Chief Connolly. We'll take staff report and then public input and then we'll have council discussion.
Good evening, everybody. I actually provided you with a memo already that I hope at least provided some history and some clarification from my perspective with respect to the IDOT study overall. I can tell you that I have a box full of three ring binders from previous year's studies prepared by Chief Adair, Chief Bealy, sitting on my desk right now, actually trying to analyze this further. I, I really don't think reviewing those reports, though, are going to answer the questions that need to be answered for this whole concept, in my opinion. As a matter of fact, we even had a PhD student study the 2007 to 2009 data. I provided that to you in your packets as well, in an effort to better understand the numbers, but unfortunately, it left many of us with more questions than it did answers. I personally believe this whole process is a lot more involved in just taking census data and converting it to driving population, especially in a unique community like ours. If we decide move, you decide to move forward with the project, I think that we need to take some steps to make this a meaningful endeavor. First, I, I believe that we need to correct the old information and make sure that it's accurately documented and entered. And that is entirely on me. I indicated in my memo as an example that the canine sniffs provided information to the IDOT folks that were not accurate. And I painstakingly went through all of those and was able to get a much better picture and identified the problems for that. Those numbers can clearly be fixed for 2013 and for the future, but for right now, I think that's the first step, is being able to work with accurate numbers. I also think we need to look at the validation, validating the benchmark by looking at who is actually driving here. That's another, going to be a big topic. I think we should also consider developing, in my opinion, a concise series of questions for context. This might give us a better picture as to why some enforcement efforts are taking place in certain areas of the city. As an example, in 2012, there were a series of shootings in the Champaign-Urbana area, specifically in Champaign, but a lot of them involved Urbana residents. And six people were shot in like a three day period. In fact, the shots fired calls for the city of Urbana increased from like 70 the year before to 121 in 2012. So, we had some violent crime trends. I think if we can concisely capture that type of activity, it's going to help at least explain some of the spikes with respect to why the police are enforcing the laws in certain areas or an omnipresence of police is there. And finally, I think we need, certainly we need IT support that allows us to not only collect the information, but extract it and then analyze it. Ellen Jordan, who I know some of you know, was absolutely incredible. Unfortunately, when he left, he left a huge void in the IT department. There are still some great folks down there, but Ellen was kind of the go-to guy for all of our IT stuff. We need IT support that's going to allow us to better collect and sort the data that's gonna be collected. Now, with respect to who should do this, in my opinion, we're already in, again, this is my opinion, we're at a saturation level with oversight. The first level are the federal and appellate, both criminal and state civil courts. We also have state courts for felonies, misdemeanor and traffic, and we also have our city court. That's one level. Two oversight boards, unique to Urbana, are the Civilian Police Review Board as well as the Human Relations Commission. In fact, the Civilian Police Review Board is one of the few in the entire state of Illinois. They are both made up of citizens of this community. Committees, neighborhood associations and safety task forces are also routinely requiring information and help and support from the police department, as well as arranging for meetings and coordinating other events with us. So, my request would be that the police department work with the Human Relations Commission or the Civilian Police Review Board so that we can first develop those questions and then work together as a group to try to answer and sort out some of the information that's out there. I hope that gives you just an overview of kind of the direction. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. I think earlier when Steve Portnoy was speaking about kind of the potential problem in overpolicing areas, or areas where there's problems, there's more cars and then you end up stopping more people that are turning, you know, rolling stops or something like that.
Right.
I understand that you can't ignore those things and it wouldn't be doing anybody in the community or the neighborhood any good to ignore those things because then you develop bad habits and things like that. But I wonder if, when those stops are made, if the officer recognizes that it's a stop he might not have made in a different neighborhood, if he hadn't, or, you know, if he had just seen that in a different neighborhood, he might not have made that stop. He'd only made it in that neighborhood because he was there and because he was interested in the people that were in that area at that time because there were drug houses in the neighborhood or something. And if, if, when they make those kind of stops, do they take the time, once they find out that, you know, the person's not involved in anything, decide to give them a warning or, or maybe a ticket, whatever they decide, do they make the point to speak to the person and say, "Listen, we've had a lot of problems in this area, this is one of the reasons I've stopped you." I think just going to that extra step and explaining that this is the reason, kind of makes people feel, "Oh, okay, I'm not being targeted," you know?
Sure.
That, that kind of thing. Is that sort of thing done?
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Brown, that we, one of the things that Alex Weiss, the guy who designed the whole study, recommended to us was that we continue to get professional training to all of our folks. Not only did I do that, but we brought Andre Berry, a nationally renowned instructor that addresses police community relations, especially within minority communities, to talk about that very issue. Mike Slasher, a PhD from the Police Training Institute, provided an eight hour block of instruction. We're gonna continue to provide that type, type of training to the police officers beyond the oversight that we routinely do with video reviews and the other issues. So, yes, the answer is, I believe that we are doing that. I also firmly believe that it's important that we articulate to the citizens of the community why they are being stopped.
Yeah, I'd like to, to support Bill's comments from my own personal experiences. When I was a young person, I lived in a completely different state and I lived in a bad neighborhood. And I found myself being stopped fairly often by the police on the, before I even like turned the corner on my block. And they weren't interested in me so much, but they were interested in the activity in the neighborhood. And they were just double checking to see, you know, if they could find, you know, further information about the activities in the area. Okay, so then now flash forward to about a year and a quarter ago when there was, you know, disturbances in the Lurman neighborhood and 40, well, there was a large group of people who had caused a riot, basically, in the neighborhood. It turned out that about three days later, I did my, my own ride along with the police and I observed several stops that took place, which had to do with traffic violations of a very minor kind. And I believe that the, the officer who was driving the car said that the reason why she's making these stops is because of the recent activity in the neighborhood that was so traumatic and that, that the police are trying to basically make sure that safety has come back to the neighborhood. So, I don't think that, that at the time, the people who were stopped necessarily, they, I think they could understand that, yes, we've had really bad disturbances in the neighborhood, but nothing was said specifically. A person might think that they're being singled out just because now the police are just everywhere around and they're, and they're watching the neighbors inordinately strictly. So, I don't know, there, there needs to be some dialogue. And I think bringing some of these issues, discussing some of these issues and the cause why stops are being performed, if it's, especially if it's a very small infraction of driving, would be extremely helpful. Now, I know that in the data that we've received and we're looked at in the statistics, one of the things that began to make a correlation about why citations were, were passed along to those people who were stopped in the various neighborhoods had a lot to do with the age of the car and the condition of the equipment. And that's often a reason why a traffic stop is done. It has a lot to do with equipment on the car, especially if the car is 20 years or older. And that data is in the statistics that we're looking at in the reports that would come down from IDOT. So, yes, there was a, you know, I, I watched a stop that had, was based on a bad, a blinker that didn't work, you know, and I've been stopped on the road also, you know, for something like that. So, these are safety things that you're, as a motorist, you appreciate hearing. But, but a lot of times, the context is lost for those people who are the driver. a lot of times, the context is lost for those people who are the driver. So these are the kinds of issues that would be most useful for training purposes to address.
Charlie?
Chief, the one thing that I found striking, just in, you know, assuming, and I don't really totally believe the numbers, but, but there is a pattern that shows up in 2010, 11, 12, especially under the reanalysis that Todd did with the new census numbers. There's a big drop between 2011 and 2012 in that ratio. There's also a jump of almost one-third the number of stops between 2011 and 2012. It goes from 2,800 to 3,700 and some. So there's some real changes between years. It also, I think it corresponds to, this is your like third full year, and I can't help but think that some of what we're seeing is a result in change in policing. I know policing's changed a lot over the years, and you represent probably an entirely new generation of policing. So, I mean, could you reflect on some of that and some of the, some of the changes that, some of the other changes that you've done in the last couple of years that might be affecting these numbers?
Well, I guess I got to be very cautious about saying that my policing philosophy or my chief philosophy is the reason why the numbers changed to reflect a better series of numbers, I guess, because, quite honestly, Chief Adair, Chief Beely, and I was a deputy chief at that time, or actually crawled through the reins from a patrolman through there.
You've built on the past.
I think the philosophy is the police department historically has been community-oriented. Now, I am more, as I hear from all of the officers, more community-oriented, requiring police officers to get out and engage with the community, get out and out of their squad cars and walk in neighborhoods and develop a better relationship with respect to neighborhood watch groups and neighborhood organizations, maybe more so than Mike Beely or Chief Adair were, only because I think that that, I'm passionate about us being a part of the community. So I can't tag it specifically to the IDOT numbers, but I can say that, you know, we need to continue to work with the community and develop a relationship with the community in order for us to be successful in reducing especially violent crime, but all crime. Now, that works, and sometimes it doesn't. You know, I just reviewed the 36 motor vehicle burglaries we were exposed to in the month of November, you know, but I was sharing a story with somebody the other day. I got a call last Wednesday from a gentleman who said, you know, "I read in the paper about the series of motor vehicle burglaries, and two days ago, at four o'clock in the morning, I was leaving the Myra Ridge area, 4:00 AM, and I noticed a car driving down the street without its lights on, and I saw a guy walking next to that car with the hood on, so I couldn't even tell you his age or race or anything. However, they were pulling on the door handles of parked cars in the area." And I was just floored by that statement because I said, "You're calling me two days later, sharing that information," and he said, "Well, you read that in the newspaper." So we still have work to do with respect to getting more neighbors engaged in a community-oriented approach. It's slow, you know, every day we get more people involved. The staff does an incredible job of trying to engage with the community, but we still have some time to go. I don't know if that answered your question.
And what about, what about the change in stops? In 2010, we had about 2,900, almost 3,000. 2011, we had 27, 2,800, and then we have a jump to 37, 3,800 last year.
Right.
Are you putting more emphasis on stops, or is it just the random?
We're putting more emphasis. Deputy Chief Morgan has put together a program that requires the police to engage in a lot more. We were doing a time allocation study, and we were trying to determine at one point whether we could present to the mayor the need for additional police officers, and in doing that study, we determined that with the number of officers we have, who are all very hardworking and conscientious, we, there's still room to do more before we, especially in the financial crisis we're in. We just closed the desk from 11:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning because we had police officers that on occasion had to sit on that desk. So Deputy Chief Morgan has made it a mission to try to get as much productive use, and it's not just traffic stops, it's police involved in policing as much as possible. So Sylvia started that program, and she's done an incredible job trying to get, now that includes also getting out into the Philo Road neighborhood and meeting with people, getting out and talking to neighbors, getting out and doing neighborhood watch groups. So it encompasses all of those.
So we're going to see very similar numbers than in 2013 as 2012?
That's correct.
And there are additional categories we could be looking at?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But again, I still think what we need to do is make sure that those numbers are accurate before we start hanging our hat on them.
Eric, and then Carol?
So the ultimate purpose of the traffic stops, of course, is to make the road safer. So is it, do you expect to see a reduction in accident rates with higher number of traffic stops, and is it possible to see that already, or will that take a, you know, longer time to play out?
Well, that's certainly something if the, whatever committee you choose, you know, you choose to, that would be certainly something that we could look at. I didn't analyze it, I don't know.
Carol?
In the, I just, I didn't get to see your memo earlier, but in the memo, you reference having to reanalyze data and see about their accuracy.
Correct.
And so are you suggesting it's possible that what was submitted to IDOT is inaccurate?
I am absolutely suggesting that.
And in what other areas do you suggest that they're inaccurate?
Well, they're inaccurate, both consent searches and K-9s. K-9 started in 2012. That was a new program. Unfortunately, the support that we had from the computer side, the IT side, was somewhat limited because Ellen was overwhelmed with a number of other issues and, but more importantly than the IT side, because what I would recommend that we do is build in checks and balances in, on the computer side, because we had some data entry errors. When I reviewed each one of the K-9 searches, and we have two issues, really, training on the part of reeducating the officers on the proper way to do it. One example is, it would indicate we had 29 searches with four or five actual finds. When I, finds meaning they actually discovered physical evidence of drugs or paraphernalia items associated with it. I then obtained all 29 of those police reports and went through them and saw through the police reports that although physical evidence wasn't packaged and used as a basis for a criminal violation, they found marijuana, for instance, it's called shake, a common street term on this, in the community is shake for just remnants of marijuana residue, or roaches, the, just the burnt portion of a marijuana cigarette that was recovered during the search. So the dog was accurate. The problem is, the police officer didn't secure that as evidence. He didn't take it and physically package it because he released the person with a warning or a ticket instead. But because the IDOT data on the back of the ticket wasn't properly documented, it went to the state of Illinois saying no evidence was recovered. So the reality is, there were some mistakes made, and we've now retrained our police officers. We've corrected those, and I went through all of those, and actually, of those, 24 of the 20, and actually, there was one duplicate, so it's 28, not 29, K-9 searches. With respect to consent searches, half of the 11 consent searches were not even consent, they were probable cause. Again, that was an issue where the police officer walked up, hypothetically, you can use the example, detect the odor of marijuana that was burnt, coming from the car. The police officer would have probable causes to search the car based on their training and experience, yet for the purposes of the IDOT study, they marked it as consent. So although it was inaccurate, we've refined those, the collection efforts now, so that we will have a step-by-step process in place, and then we will go back through 2013 to make sure all those numbers are correct.
And I was going to ask you, you raised something, because these, the stops where you say it were problematic, were the K-9 and the consent searches.
With respect to annotation.
Annotation, consent searches, K-9. We had, I think there's a couple of things that really just jumped out at me when you said that. We had, last year, invited Major Neil Franklin here to Urbana and Champaign to talk about the drug war and its impact on the African-American community and on exactly what you just described, the consent and the K-9 searches, which most of those turn out to be against African-Americans. Now, the interesting thing about it is how much of that drug war is driving, whether accurately or not, whether perceived real or not, is driving the amount of stopping that's taking place in the African-American community. And there is an economic impact, similar to the property issue. In this case, it's not a people, but it's an economic issue in the criminal justice system, because then they turn around and have to pay the bulk load of majority of fines and fees at the court system, where other communities who have equal usage don't exactly have that same economic impact. And so now, I'm looking at, there's possibly a problem in systemic problem in the information that's been submitted to the state, which we're relying upon. There's a perception problem as well, and there's a problem in the court system where when you go to traffic court, you see largely African-Americans. And so somehow, the disparity can't be explained away with a .025. You have to really zero in on it and say, "Why is there disparity? If it's small or large, doesn't matter to me. If it's a disparity in equity, it's still inequity. And how do we address the inequity?"
See, I would argue that we would probably have to first figure out the reasons why the police are affecting the stop. As I said, if there are 121 shots fired calls, and we're focusing our attention on reducing violent crime, and as a result of that, we saturate an area that is predominantly African-American, regardless of the race, I think what we're trying to do is reduce violent crime.
Well, I think that there is, there is also anecdotal data, anecdotal data that says that there's violent crime happening throughout the community. We don't saturate other parts of the community because there's a violent crime.
Oh, that's not true. I disagree vehemently. If there's a shots fired call, well, come to Colorado Trace or other locations where...
Silver and Water, those are different areas. I, no, I'm looking for, no, I'm saying, in other parts of the city, we don't saturate. You said saturate, that's a different term, and I remember the shootings last year, where there was a meeting where they talk about saturating the North End and East Urbana. Nowhere else. There's been many shootings in the community. So I'm looking with data, not necessarily just from the surface, but where's the data to support it. But on top of that...
Well, those six, there were six shootings, all of whom were African-American, and there were up to 30, 30 suspects identified, all of whom were African-American. So for the purpose of reducing violent crime in that particular series of events, that's where we focused our attention.
I understand. Dr. Nicole Anderson-Cobb did a study last year that showed violent crimes and shootings across Champaign County.
Okay.
And there were, there were many that were not African-American, but there was no saturation. There's a difference between the acceptable saturation in certain communities and the non-acceptable saturation in others. And this is not something I do. There's a research that's been done across the country, as well as Urbana's not unique. Urbana's racial profiling data is not unique. What we're trying to do in Urbana is say that we don't do what other people are doing around the country, and our numbers are different for different reasons, whether it's data entry problems or training problems. But we want to get to actually what creates the disparity and how do we actually resolve it? Those are my only two questions. What creates the disparity, and how do we actually solve the disparity? Because that's really where we have to go at the end of the day. And if people don't, if they accept a disparity, high or big or small, then we can't get to that point. But if they don't accept a disparity, then we try to find ways to address that. That's my goal in this process, and I hope that that's the goal of the council, and that's what they voted on, is to say, "What's the disparity, and how do we get it solved?" And I don't want to play around with numbers and statistics, and people don't understand it. What they do understand is when they walk into traffic court, it's largely African-Americans. How come that's the case, and how do we get that to be more equitable in the driving population? That's the question that I want answered.
Eric?
I just want to be sure I heard you correctly, Chief. You said that the response, the police response, in terms of saturating an area in response to a shooting, is precisely the same, no matter where in the community the shooting occurs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, I know that Urbana has had community policing for a number of years, and I think that the police department, and I know the chief, they really do outreach to the community. I remember when we were having problems with migrant workers getting attacked. You met with them. And so there is a real concern about treating everybody fairly and protecting all the people that call for police protection. So I thank you for that.
I had one question. The traffic stop data and the statistics are driving this discussion. So one thing I want to clarify, the numbers of traffic stops do not, that we got, do not distinguish between Urbana residents and non-residents, yet those figures, those numbers are being compared to Urbana residential population. So we have the ability to pull out or distinguish between residents and non-residents, right? So we can be comparing Urbana resident statistics to Urbana...
We do, and I think Mr. Brown mentioned during the November 11th meeting that it was like 50%, I think it's 49% actually of, not that it matters, because you're right, the numbers really, but yes, the answer is yes.
So half, half the stops on those charts are non-Urbana residents?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? Mike?
Not a question so much as, well, first of all, a comment. Your comments about the context within which these stops are happening, I think is, it's a very, very important component here, because like with all of the shootings that happened, a lot of them in Champaign, but I think a lot of folks in Urbana were implicated in some of that stuff. So obviously, you reached out to Champaign to help, as they would to Urbana. University was involved. And of course, there's going to be saturation in areas where you think the suspects are. That doesn't necessarily mean a black neighborhood, but it's where the suspects are, and they were all African-American, right? So I think one thing that all the, all the folks who are advocating more study on this issue, or maybe not more study, but action on this issue, one thing that could be helpful would be to have a group of people actually try to figure out how to help the city define that context within the scope of the police database. If a beat, you know, if a beat is going to be saturated for a shift, maybe something at the headquarters can say, "That beat is red, yellow, green, whatever," you know, for the day, and then maybe there's a statistical context for those stops. I don't know. That's just really intriguing to me, that there be, not just that there was a stop, but that there might have been an overarching context for several stops in that area in that given time.
Right.
Because, look, let's face it, traffic stops are a law enforcement tool. We can all talk about traffic safety, but it is a fact that they are a law enforcement tool. Now, does taillight out, or a turn signal out, or some other, some other mechanical problem that's visible on the car, is that a traffic safety issue? Sure, but it's also probable cause when police are trying to keep us all safe. Now, let's all just remember that this is not just about traffic safety, is kind of my point there. My third, the third thing I want to say is, you know, he, the chief mentioned that we've closed the desk out here for lack of funds, and tried to, you know, reallocate those resources to the community where we need them. So I'm very concerned about further stretching the overtime budget of the police to, to deal with yet another committee. I think the chief has pointed out that there are two committees now, either of which are very capable of taking up this issue if it warrants it. But in my opinion, I think what we ought to do is figure out from this point forward, how can we make the training of the police to record the data and the submission of the data... data to be more accurate to I-DOT, that maybe we prospectively start looking at the data to see if there actually is a disparity going forward. I think the data has been analyzed by all kinds of folks that has been submitted over the last few years, and there are vast differences of opinion. So maybe the thing to do is for everyone to get together to figure out how we can better report from now forward.
Yeah, this isn't a question, more of a comment, but it's directed to you. I did a ride along in June or July, I think, and had a good experience, got to look for the shell casings after shots fired and things like that. And I think that all the officers I met, I think I've met maybe 10 or 12 since I've been on the council, have been the most professional. So I think one risk here is we have to be careful that we aren't accusing officers of racial profiling or... I think most officers, and all of them I've met, try their best to follow correct police procedure, and when they do that, everything's fine. So I don't think we want to imply that we want to control how they do their job. And I think as long as they're following correct procedure, everything works fine. So I just hope that you would help explain that to them if there's any questions. We aren't attacking anyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol?
This is very difficult to be in this seat that I'm sitting in, in this room as it is currently situated. For this particular topic to be, the comments to almost completely disregard an experience of the African American community, justifying in some way, not dealing with police being bad police officers, I've had great experiences my entire life in Urbana with the officers. I personally have. That is not what we're talking about, though. But the use of these words to just completely ignore in some way, the experience of the African American community forces that community to have to come and testify before you their experiences, not mine or yours. And when your community don't pay the traffic fines at the same level, then there is a disparity that has to be addressed. The other thing that Mr. Madigan said, which I agree with, is that it is a tool. These are tools. Racial profiling actually is a tool. It is documented, studied, and directed to all police departments across this country that there is a racial profiling tool that they use to fight violent crime, to deal with drug cases, or, you know, we had a profiling case that came through, unfortunately, a young man was shot to death and killed because the officer thought that he was Mexican because his license plate was from Texas. This is a quote from his interview. I'm saying to this council that it disturbs my spirit, not necessarily my experience, because it ain't my experience, but my spirit is disturbed because the response is, this can't be as serious as you guys are saying it is. It's diminished in some way, that the experience, the economic impact, the actual stops, whether big, small, the disparity, is saying, well, I hope, you know, these guys can look past this and move forward. The CPRB, the HRC already existed prior to October's meeting. Both of those boards existed. This issue was brought to the CPRB maybe a year or two ago, asking them, when it first came out, to pick up the racial disparity data from the I-DOT traffic report. And their response was, that is beyond their purview. They did not want to pick up this issue two years ago. This very issue, Mr. Madigan, where they were asked to look into this disparity, and the result was that the city hired someone else to come in and look at that and did a different thing. That's fine. But because the disparity still exists does not mean that we should just say, well, it's a small disparity, and so it shouldn't be a big problem. The mayor has done what she can to usurp this process behind the scenes, and I am so disappointed in that. I'm disappointed in that because I am representing a minority community, and this is an issue that has been put in numbers. Whether we agree with the number or not is not the point. That's not the point. Our community come and say, I am unhappy about the way that you are annexing my property. We say, let's give them the whole kit and caboodle. This is what experience happened tonight in this room, and a community of color come and say, I have a problem, and you say, it's not that big of a problem. The response is like disregarding the community, and I hate to have to take that position as the only African American on this board, because it makes me very uncomfortable. But that is a true experience. And if I go back in history, I can find this exact same comment, and the community that brought it forward had to fight like hell to get basic rights met. And we should not be having this conversation in such a way that it disregards the experience of those who are stopped. I will tell you that my friend was stopped recently. He's a professional, and he works in Springfield. And he was stopped in Urbana on his way to Walgreens. He called me and told me he had gotten stopped. He said he pulled up against the officer in Urbana, and he saw him, he saw him, and he just kind of said, oh, my God, I usually pull over, but I'm not going to pull over, I'm just going to go on to Walgreens. Of course, he got stopped. Was he driving too fast? Nope, he wasn't doing any of those things. The officer thought it was something else, didn't give him a ticket or anything. But he pulled him over anyway, realized what the situation was, let him go. My friend said he felt unequivocally that he was pulled over because he was African American. He is a professional. He drives to work every single day. He is a married man, and he does good work in this community. I don't know if it was or wasn't. It could be anecdotal. The reality is, it adds to that number, and we will not let this go because we don't think it's so bad. And I'm just really disappointed in the response that has come across this council. I certainly didn't expect it from this side of the fence. And I would hope that the public, those who have experiences, have to come forward at this point, because if you don't, then it won't be justified for what the council was asked to do at this point.
I guess I can respond a little bit to your friend that was stopped. I met with your friend for an hour and 20 minutes, trying to explain at least the officer's opinion about what happened, and we are meeting again with your friend, and I hope that I will be able to explain it to his and her satisfaction. But we can only do so much. I'm more than willing to meet with anybody at any time. I tell people constantly, feel free, if there's ever an issue, to contact me and report that information, so I can research it, look into the problem, see whether or not there's a problem that exists, and try to provide an explanation, as Mr. Brown and Mr. Roberts both recommend it or request it. So as those issues are brought to my attention, I try to address them.
I believe you, Chief, I know you have. Again, it's not my experience, but it's many others, but he has resources and many don't. Many don't feel comfortable doing exactly what you just said, or they don't know how to do that. That's why I suggest that they have to come forward, because they won't. You won't get that information if they don't come forward. This gentleman knows that he needs to come forward. That's why he did.
Right.
But many don't. And unfortunately, the numbers say that they don't, and they're not sitting in this room.
Thank you.
We have some members of the public who wish to speak to this issue. First is Patricia Avery from the NAACP.
Good evening, Patricia Avery. Actually, I was pretty calm when I came in to the meeting, but as I was listening to the conversation, my anxiousness elevated to a point where I didn't want it to go. First, you know, I rise in support of a traffic stop ad hoc committee. I think hearing the discussion makes me feel like it's even more relevant than I maybe even thought it was before I came in. I would also ask the council to have as much patience with members who are going to come in, come up to you and speak to you about this issue. I know that property rights have always, in this country, elevated to a higher level than human rights, but we're talking about a human rights issue tonight, and I want, I hope that you are as generous in allowing us the time to speak to this matter, because I think it's one that is very important. Before I go on, I want full disclosure to Chief Connolly, who I know in his report, he talked about inviting people to ride alongs. Just recently, we had a conversation where, you know, I think it got a little elevated, where he said, I've invited you to a number of ride-alongs, and you haven't taken me up on that offer. Full disclosure, I have not ridden along with Chief Connolly, or have I participated in the Citizens Police Academy. But I do want to say this, no ride-along is going to change the facts. The facts are what they are. By me riding along with a police officer in the car is not going to change the results of the report. But I do intend on taking some time, at some point in time, to do a ride-along. But I am, the NAACP is a membership organization made of volunteers, and we are stretched very thin. We hear a lot of complaints. As a matter of fact, we hear over 50% of our complaints are traffic-related. The very scenario that was your council lady, Carol Ammons, talked about, that person actually came to see me about that very situation. We did sit down with Chief Connolly, but I have to tell you, it was just eye-opening and very heartbreaking to actually have him describe to us what he goes through mentally every time, and I know most of us do. When we see a police officer and he gets behind us, we all say, okay, or is our seatbelt on? You know, we go through that mental role play. But it's more than that, especially if you're an African American man. And if you were in the room when he described what he goes through every time, I mean, anxiety comes over. He said, I know, I probably should have pulled over, I had my hands, I checked this. The exercise that he went through mentally and physically just because he saw a police officer was unbelievable, and I think even Chief Connolly had to agree, that was just an unbelievable testimony by that young man. But as it turned out, this wasn't, this traffic stop did not happen during the time of any escalated violent crimes happening in the community. And I can assure you that this traffic stop takes place over a year's time. We don't have shootings, thank God we don't. We're not Chicago where we have shootings all the time. So the number of complaints that we see and the number of people of color in the traffic courts throughout the year would say that this, we have an oversaturation of policing going, whether or not there's violent crimes taking place in the community or not, let's explain.
You have one minute, Ms. Avery.
No, I'm asking for more time, because I really, my eyebrows went up when Mr. Madigan said, well, he's here to talk about property rights, we ought to give him more time.
I'm here to move to give you more time.
Well, we're, thank you, very much. So let, so I just really think that the council needs to just, really just hear us out. We're here not to attack anyone, because we need the police just as much as anybody else does. We need them in our community, too. But to say that every time that we have an issue, that we come out and we try to appeal to a council, that somehow we have to be in an attack mode, that is not the case at all. We simply, I mean, and we have ad hoc committees all the time. We're simply asking for an ad hoc committee. We're not asking for anything that has not happened before. As a matter of fact, the Champaign County, as an example, they have many oversight committees. They have the Justice Committee, they have the court system, they have the state's attorneys. They have a number of oversight committees and departments. But yet, they created an ad hoc committee to look at jury selection. They created an ad hoc committee to look at the jailhouse expansion project. And it makes a difference when you do have these oversight bodies. We're not even asking for 50 to 60% of the membership B citizens of the community. We would invite people from the Citizens Review Board and the Human Relations Board to sit on this committee. It's up to the city council. If you think that the work needs to be placed in their purview, why don't you ask them to join this ad hoc committee? I think that would be a wise decision. No, I don't want to disrespect Mr. Trent, but he's not here. But the NAACP has been asking, and we've been meeting, to, trying to get a meeting with the CRB for over a year now. We haven't gotten that. So, you know, what's, I don't know what's going on with that. And also, I was looking at HRC and looking at their minutes, unless the website is not up to date, the last time I saw they approved some minutes was in March for November and December of last year. Now, maybe they've met since then, and, but, I mean, that's what the website would indicate. So it's not a lot of activity going on, so why don't we have them join us? This is a specific issue that we are asking to address. And I think after listening to Chief Connolly, the NAACP, we meet with him, but we do not sit, we do not meet with him on, with his regular citizen group, but he is, he has been very open to meeting with us whenever we do have these issues and someone comes to us and complains. He's been very open to meet with us. But I do believe that we really do need to have this ad hoc committee, especially after hearing Mr. Madigan say that this is a law enforcement tool. And I want to say to you all that if it's a tool, the tools come out of the toolbox a lot more often when it comes down to African Americans, and that's just a fact. I know it's hard to take and it's hard to hear, but it is, it is what it is. And I have to agree that whenever there is a disparity, we need to find out, let's just try to find out why it is. You know, we don't want to point any fingers at anybody, but it is a problem, and it's a problem that we need to address. With that said, I think that's it. I just hope that the council will really think seriously about a citizens ad hoc committee. I think it is one that we can take a look at. We already know that the numbers that have gone to the state have been not accurate. So I think that that's another reason why maybe we could use a citizens group to help kind of look at that. Thank you.
Mayor?
Patricia, I wanted to ask you, why do you want this to only be about Urbana?
I don't. I don't.
Okay, because the request came in that they're just going to look at Urbana, and I went to the League of Women Voters, and I said, why are you picking on Urbana? Because Urbana's already studied this. We're happy to look at the criminal justice system, but I think you have to look at the whole county.
I think we should.
And the county's statistics went way up, and Urbana's are going down. And I do have a report to give on some of the assumptions that go into measuring that, which I will talk about.
Well, I think the I-DOT...
But I'm glad to hear you say that you'd like to see the whole thing looked at.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'd like to see the drug laws looked at, you know, is this, is this part of it? Because we have law enforcement, and they're following the laws, and there's some discrepancy in how the laws are drawn up that affect some populations more than others.
I absolutely think we should look at it from a county-wide level, but we're here before you right now.
Okay, are you willing to go to the county and to the city of Champaign?
I'm willing to go anywhere that we can go without having someone feel threatened or feel like they're being attacked simply because we are bringing this information.
Well, we just feel that we're being asked to do a study. We've already done a study, we're willing to study it, but we're not, we are in a very tough financial situation, and we can't put a lot of resources into doing something. And I think that it's something that's a county-wide issue, not just an Urbana issue. And I think that people are jumping to conclusions, because I think quite frankly, the Urbana Police Department has the best reputation, and we were told that we were the worst based on this one statistic.
So who said that you were the worst?
Well, someone did say that a year or so ago, or maybe it was three years ago when we first started studying this.
Well, certainly.
So, you know, I...
So, right now...
I think we do our best to try to treat people fairly. That doesn't mean that we're doing things perfectly, we're willing to learn, but I don't think you should just only focus on Urbana. So I'm happy to hear that you...
I'm not only focusing on Urbana.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that.
I'm sitting before Urbana right now, because this is where it was brought, and this is the discussion that you're having right now. I am willing to talk to anybody who would be open to take a look at this. And I feel right now as if people are going on the defensive right now, and I just feel, why, why should this issue... And I just feel, why, why should this issue bring people to the level where they feel like they're being attacked or have to be defensive? Because we're asking for a group. And you don't have to put any more money into it. I was just saying, HRC doesn't meet that often and CRB doesn't either.
Our, our website was down, so it's getting back up again, but you'll see that there were more meetings. And I think that, you know, the meetings are open to the public. If you had anything you wanted to talk about with CRB, you're welcome to come to the meeting and bring it up.
Well.
And also, people who have complaints should be asked to file a complaint with the civilian review board.
From what I understand, that this issue did go to CRB and CRB did not take this issue up?
No, they studied it in 2009. I don't know why anybody said they didn't take it up.
Anybody?
I mean, you just said it. I don't know why people are saying that because they did study it. They hired a graduate student. They talked with the gentleman who developed the statistics and they produced a report.
So are we to, so the rest of the people that are here to speak, based on this conversation that you and I are having publicly, they don't need to waste their breath or their time to come to this mic because it sounds to me as if you feel as if our coming before you somehow is picking on the Urbana Police Department. And by asking to do a study, I think that even if we develop a committee, an ad hoc committee, we don't have to look at this through a, one, a small lens. We can look at this from a larger lens because the I-DOT study is of a larger lens. So, I mean, it might, it might be that the study does reflect, this group show, comes to show, yeah, you know what, actually Urbana police officers are the best out of all of them.
Well, I think the people that came two weeks ago to this committee said they only wanted to study Urbana. So that's why I made the statement that I did because I think it's a much broader problem.
I do too.
And I also think that.
Trust me, believe.
I also think that the statistics are misleading and I will talk about that later, but anyway.
They are certainly misleading because I get a number of complaints that never comes to the ears or the eyes of these council. A lot of people refuse to even file complaints.
Why do they refuse, do you think?
Well, I could share my own personal story, but we don't have time. I think I'm going to allow somebody else to come up here and speak because, you know, I don't like wasting my breath. And if it's falling on deaf ears, then I can just stop talking right now.
I mean, we've tried to make it be publicly known and I hope the NAACP tells people that they can file a complaint with the police department.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that we will look at things and we have the CRB in case they're not happy with what the police chief says.
Absolutely.
So we have really tried to get out to the community and say, "If you've got a problem with us, we want to deal with it."
Absolutely. I tell them all the time. I said, "Don't, you know, you shouldn't be intimidated. If you felt like there's been something that's been done wrong against you, you absolutely need to file a complaint." I definitely encourage that.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. It's different.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Melinda Carr, representing the Ministerial Alliance of Champagne, Urbana
Good evening, Mayor Purstein and council members. I had something written up and I left it at home, so I'm just going to go with a few things I wrote down, plus I had an article I wanted to read. I'm going to repeat some of the things that have been said. Patricia Avery, I kind of did to, did tell some of the things she said about, you know, the Minister Alliance, we do support having a committee, a separate committee be established. And for one reason is that the organizations that have come forward to, you know, bring this issue to the attention of the council, although it's been said that the review board has looked at it. But apparently, we're looking at data instead of looking at the experiences of people. And at the last meeting that I was at, there were some experiences that were brought forward and even someone who, you know, people of different races who came forward. And even a professor came and talked about her students and even addressed council members, you know, of one, Mr. Jacobson, has experienced things personally in his household and things that I wouldn't have even heard of, he hadn't said it here in the council chambers. And so I guess I'm kind of having a problem too with some of the responses because we're looking at data, but also experiences of people that are tangible things that have happened to people. And we should really look at those and consider them and make some changes based on those responses that we receive. You know, they're perceived things and there are things that are happening, actually happening to people. And as they say, look in the courts, but there are people, they're talking, we hear things, you know, the alliance, there are ministers, there are pastors, there, people are coming to them. And some people are fearful of making reports. You know, they're afraid, you know, some people are afraid of being targeted and things like that. We have to be truthful about things that are happening. And I'm not saying, yes, I've called the police before, so we, yes, we need the police in our community. And we do have some great policemen in our community. And then I'm going to read this article as I want to just reflect on that we do have policemen that are corrupt. We have to be honest and truthful about this. We can't put our head in the sand. So let me just read this article from, it's not me saying it, it's an article that's on the, on the web. Anybody can go and look at it. January 17, 2013, Chicago. Police corruption in Chicago survives due to a lack of oversight and indifference from internal and external leadership, according to a new report published by researchers at the University of Illinois at Chicago. The report, quote, "Crime Corruption and Cover-Ups in the Chicago Police Department," unquote, examines the convictions of CPD officers since 1960. Over the past five decades, no fewer than 300 officers have been convicted of crimes such as drug dealing, beating some civilians, destroying evidence, protecting mobsters, theft and murder. More than 90 of the convictions have taken place since 2000. The problem of police corruption in Chicago is not simply that there are occasional flawed police officers. By far, most officers are law-abiding, dedicated public servants, says report co-author John Hagadorn, UIC professor of criminology, law and justice. Quote, "The real problem is that an embarrassingly large number of police officers violate citizens' rights."
You have one minute.
I thought I was going to, can I get a little more time to read this, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Engaged in corruption and commit crimes while escaping detection and avoiding discipline of persecution for many years, unquote. According to the report, police corruption is enabled by a, quote, "blue code of silence," unquote, entrenched in department culture where officers avoid reporting crimes and misconduct by their colleagues. Hagadon says the war on drugs makes oversight of policing for patrol officers and drug and vice officers alike more difficult. The report finds that standard drug-law enforcement operations can blur the line between corrupt and upstanding, thus reinforcing a need for high, tighter supervision and training of sergeants and frontline supervisors. To combat police corruption, the researchers propose a combination of external review initiatives and internal incentives. One key recommendation is to replace the appointed police board with a democratically-elected board of civilians or an entirely new appointed board. Quote, "These proposed reforms are designed to create effective oversight structures and a culture of honest service within the Chicago Police Department," said report co-author Dick Simpson, UIC professor of political science. Quote, "Police corruption not only undermines public trust in law enforcement," unquote, Simpson said, "but also costs taxpayers millions of dollars in corruption-related prosecutions, lawsuits, defense and settlements." The report, which is online at, I'm not going to read this WWW, features detailed recommendations, historical data and information on Chicago Police Department corruption and oversight, categorization of police conviction statistics and 10 case studies illustrating the different types of corruption. UIC ranks among the nation's leading research universities and is Chicago's largest university with 27,500 students, 12,500 faculty and staff, 15 colleges and the state's major public medical center. A hallmark of the campus is a great city's commitment through which UIC faculty, students and staff engage with community, corporate, foundation and government partners in hundreds of programs to improve the quality of life in metropolitan areas around the world. And then for more information and then has the website. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Daryl Cruz, 2007, South George Huff Drive. The traffic stop racial disparities affecting African-American drivers in our community are factual and are real. The only questions remaining, and I agree with Chief Connolly, is to understand why they exist, to what degree do they exist and what can we do to help address them. After nine years, the city council is to be committed for finally taking new steps to address this issue in a direct, forthright and transparent manner through the formation of a task force. Clearly, some do not feel a task force is needed, but rather that existing internal city staff and commissions are able and equipped to address this issue. On the surface, this appears to make reasonable sense. But the problem is, there is little or no evidence to assume that it would be the best or most effective approach to addressing this problem. In fact, based upon nine years of previous experiences, we should assume just the opposite. The traffic stop racial disparities have been known to the city for nine years. The city's responses have been to dismiss the disparities, to take a wait-and-see attitude or when pressured to act, to act internally while dismissing direct community engagement. The outside public has never been welcomed or invited to be active participants with the city to address this problem. Maybe that is why there has been little accomplished in nine years. The city's closed-door approach fails to recognize the valuable input and perspective the community at large has to offer in finding a solution to this problem. I encourage the city council to be cautious in buying into the argument that the city can best handle this internally with existing commissions and boards. It hasn't worked yet. Alexander Wies, the I-DOT project director, summed it best in a very first I-DOT report in 2005. He said, "We can use the kind of data gathered for this study as a tool to inform the community. It can be useful instrument to help frame an important discussion and it can provide a framework for accountability and community participation." So why are we so hesitant in Urbana? How is that? Okay, I thought this sound went off there. Did it? Am I drinking? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
My wife, actually.
Okay. So why are we so hesitant in Urbana to use this data to inform, frame, the purpose of our future discussions and to allow for direct community participation? Those are the very reasons this legislation was passed 10 years ago. Therefore, I would suggest to you that unfettered, direct community representation on a newly-formed task force is the key and a vital aspect to its actual success. Allowing organizational community representation on a task force would accomplish the following, and I think they're your goals also. One, it would just demonstrate a commitment and belief on the part of the city and the police department that they cannot solve this problem alone, that it is a part, that the community is part of helping the solution, finding a solution, not the problem. Two, it shows that the city and police department actually value and listen to concerns and needs of the many voices of the broader community, not just the select few. You would be saying, "We not only want, but need you to work with us in order to be effective in solving these problems." Thirdly, it would be a significant step to building the community trust and improving community police relationships with the community that you desire. Four, the task force would provide greater procedural integrity and confidence within the community by being open, accessible and transparent to multiple lines of community participation and representation. Five, the task force would ensure that the conversation is enriched and expanded with more, not less, newer, not the same, broader, not narrower, differing, not similar perspectives that have likely been missed in the past. And finally, the task force would help and improve the community's acceptance of any final recommendations and actions made by the task force. Therefore, improving the likelihood of real substantive changes benefiting the entire community. This issue, the task force composition, is too important for the city council to limit and restrict to only existing city staff and commission members. The city has tried this in the past and it hasn't worked, I don't think, to anyone's satisfaction. Tonight, you must stand firm and state that you want to try a different approach, an approach that creates a specifically designated task force charged to address this issue with representation to include members from concerned, involved community organizations. Once in a while, direct community, excuse me, direct democratic public participation is useful and needed. This is such a case. Don't miss the opportunity before you tonight. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Cruz? Okay. Next up is Martell Miller.
Martell Miller, 412 Illinois Street. I had a whole nother conversation before I heard Chief Connolly talk, before I seen some of the responses from the council up here, especially from the mayor. We can use these numbers to avoid dealing with a situation. But I can tell you about my experience with Urbana police myself. And I've been dealing with Urbana police since Beasley in, I can't think of the one that, Chief before Beasley. My mind just went blank, but the Chief before Beasley, what is his name? Can't think of it. Oh, Dare. I've been dealing with community problems with the police, racial profile and stuff. I come and talk to Chief for Dare. Chief for Dare said, "You got a complaint with us? You take it up in the courts." Because he didn't want to hear about racial profile and things going on in the black community. And he was a black chief. When I met with Beasley, me and him had conversation. Beasley did have an open ear, but the things were still happening in the part of towns we was talking about. It was around King Park. They would just stop. And we're talking about traffic stops. We don't even, I don't even collect the stop and just get your ID because you're walking down the street. And I can talk about an experience that happened to me right over here on Illinois Street, the street I live on. Urbana police pull up on me, asked me where I'm going. I said, "Where I'm going? What's the reason you stopped?" Then he asked me where I'm coming from. So I turned around and asked him, "Do you need my ID?" And he said, "I just asked you where you're coming from and where you're going." I said, "Do you need my ID? What reason you got to stop me? Because I'm walking down the street and asked me where I'm going and where have I been? If you need my ID, I'll give it to you." And we had a conversation. And we had a conversation for about a minute or two, and I think he realized who I was, and he didn't take my ID, and he drove off. This is probably about two years ago. Another incident, I was coming down Main Street, the officer U-turn got behind me. I was in another person's car. He was looking at the car and said it looked like a car that he had stopped a few days ago. And I'm saying, "That guy right to stop a car?" And I gave him my ID, and he ran it and stuff like that. But that was, to me, a straight racial profile stop. My daughter got stopped one time. She pulled out the gas station, bought some gas. Officer followed her up to Fairview, and Lincoln pulled her over. First thing he said to her and his friends, that he stopped them because they were in a high-drug area. They at the gas station on Lincoln and Bradley. I ended up having to call the sergeant out there, because they did bring the dog out there, sniffed the car. Now, I bet he had the guy search the car twice. Then he brought the dog out there. And while the dog went around the car, the officer's hitting on the car. Then he said the dog hit on the car. But when the dog went in there, he didn't find anything. Then the officer go back and searched the car, and he comes out with a plastic bag in two seconds, which I don't watch them search. They didn't know I was sitting there when they stopped my daughter, because she called me. I'm sitting in the family video, watching the whole thing. He pulls out a plastic bag. I had them bring a sergeant out there. And they end up letting my daughter go, but they didn't find any marijuana. She was stopped because she left her gas station, and it was just all because driving while black. And that's what y'all don't want to deal with. Don't none of these Caucasian men go through, driving while black. You know, you got to make sure your hands up where they can see them, no movement. People have been shot in America while driving while black. All we asking for y'all to take a look at this and wonder why African-Americans are stopped more than Caucasian people. And when you want to look at, if you're talking about drugs, if you take out the FBI report, the main drug user is a white Caucasian, 18 to 35 years old. So you want to have a real drug war, but start stopping them a lot more, and I guarantee you find more drugs. That is the FBI statistics for the police. So when we looking at these things, let's don't look at it from the crime, then the shootings they say they happened. I got involved in it as a citizen point to stop them shootings. You know, it ain't just the police. The community is the police too. You know, we got to deal with some things, but we cannot use the law to break the law. You cannot stop someone's freedom of movement, which that's what they do, to make the law. And then once you stop, you got to figure out a crime. You know, a lot of people get stopped for legal language usage, unpopular language usage. But if you follow someone for 10 blocks, they may go too close to the line, and they may do something for you to stop them. We got to deal with the problem, and which we all know is called racial profiling all over the country. We here at Urbana because we thought that we had a chance to get a committee out of the community with the police and whoever y'all want to put on the committee to deal with the problem. So let's don't look at the statistics, look at the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on this topic is Dr. Evelyn Underwood from Tremont Street.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I know I don't have very much time, so I hope I can make sense, but I want to get a lot in. When I was speaking to Mr. Steve, I think he's from the ACLU, I talked about qualitative versus quantitative, because he's a statistician, methodologies, when he was talking to Mr. Charlie over here. And so hopefully you understand what I was trying to get at. I also wanted to talk about the Civilian Police Review Board and culture of control, who to put on and who not to put on, whether you're qualified or not. Also, I want to talk about the Human Relations Commission, culture of control, who not to put on, if you stand for something, who to put off. Also, I wanted to talk about the task force, asking for the task force. The Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and vicinity, ACLU, League of Women Voters, NAACP, and I can't think of the other groups. Oh, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice. I mean, who, I mean, this is a variety of people, of organization, different kinds of organization, asking for this. Additionally, fear, fear, fear. I'm thinking of Mr. Nelson Mandela. I've been talking to so many people, many people have been talking to me. Yes, he was over there in Africa, but he's world-renowned lord of 27 years in jail. Fear! I tell the people, "Fear! You're fearful of going to the Police Review Board and sign a complaint, what they're going to do to you and what you got targeted. Forget about it." And that's what I've been telling people. We can't fear. We've got to do what is necessary. Yes, if you have to go to jail, you're not going to go for 27 years. We've got to stand for that which is right. I hope somebody is listening and looking at me. Compassion, not anger. Other factors, white privilege. Did you hear those gentlemen? And I've been telling everybody. And the young lady at Parkland College, what she was talking about the other night, I know it wasn't easy for her to come up here, because some people at Parkland probably going to, "Why did you go to the City Council?" I mean, I know what it means. I know what it's like. I know what it feels like to have a JD, a PhD, and can't get a job because of what you stood for. I know what's this like, but you go on anyway. That's enough.
That's it as far as public input cards which have been turned in. We'll open this up for discussion. Mayor, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I was looking at the IDOT disparity ratio. We were being asked to form a task force which assumes that the police practices are driving the IDOT ratio. I think the IDOT ratio is driving the perception in some people of a police problem. This ratio is inconsistent with everything else we know about the Urbana police. We need to first understand how the ratio is calculated and whether it actually measures what some claim it does. And if you look at how it's calculated, what it does is it takes the proportion of minorities, the way they measure the proportion of minorities in the driving public is just an estimate, and it can't be relied upon to determine whether there's racial profiling in police stops, and here's one reason why. The IDOT ratio attempts to compare the number of minority driver police stops with the minority share of the population. The minority share of the population is used as an estimate of the minority share of the driving population. And a figure of 100, when you compare these two numbers together, would indicate that the proportion of minority stops is identical with the proportion of minority population. And in a small city like Urbana, with a huge share of its population being University of Illinois students, this introduces a significant distortion. There are 43,000 Illinois, University of Illinois students. The population of Urbana is 41,250. The University of Illinois student population differs in two key respects from the non-student population. First, U of I students are far less likely to be drivers, and second, the U of I students are far less likely to be African-American. Their 5% of the U of I student population is African-American, and it's 16.3% for the total population of Urbana. When you look at the IDOT statistics, the raw data shows Urbana with a somewhat higher disparity ratio than Champaign. Champaign had 179%, and Urbana had 208% in 2012. However, the populations in the two cities are very different according, when you consider the University of Illinois student population. In Champaign, the African-American population for the total city was 15.6%. In Urbana, it was 16.3%. But when you look at the University of Illinois students and assume, and I think somebody can check this, but I assume this is reasonable, that half the students live in Champaign and half live in Urbana. That means that over half of Urbana's population is University of Illinois students. So that, the fact that there are only 5% African-Americans, that lowers the ratio that we think we have of drivers that are African-American, and that raises this IDOT University of Illinois students are over half of the Urbana population, and they're 1/4 of the Champaign population. So that makes a big difference when you start doing comparisons of statistics. If you adjust the population figures and subtract out the University of Illinois students, the African-American share of the non-student population in Urbana rises from 16.3% to 28.8%. The Champaign figure changes from 15.5% to 19.5%. Just this one adjustment lowers the IDOT disparity ratio in Urbana to 118 instead of what it was before, 2008, I think it was, 208. 118 is below that in Champaign adjusted, which would be 144. It's below the county, which is 191, and it's below the state of Illinois average of 128. So clearly, any study should not just focus on Urbana, but include Champaign as well as the county. And I think the true measure of disparity, if you're talking about policing, would be the number of stops versus the number of drivers on the street, not the population. Urbana, again, as a small city, has a lot of traffic in and out from other towns, and the IDOT ratio, because it only uses population to estimate drivers, is very arbitrary and hardly a measure of police discrimination. It's a huge leap to assume that the IDOT numbers are a reflection of police practices. So before embarking on an investigation of the police department, it would make more sense to determine what factors are driving the IDOT ratio. This could be done by the Human Relations Commission. I think it's excessive to set up a separate task force. That's because this city is in extreme financial difficulty due to the fact that our two major hospitals are no longer paying property taxes. And I think that people who are proposing a task force, which, you know, what we got from Carol was, you know, that they would have access to all kinds of experts and everything. I think if you're going to provide something like that, there should be a budget request and not giving a blank check. And I think the proposal should also be reviewed in the context of our setting goals. And again, Urbana should not be singled out while Champaign and the county are ignored. Urbana is the only government that has a civilian review board for the police and the only government that has already taken the time and expense to review the IDOT ratios. So again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to studying this, but I want to do a comprehensive look at all the agencies and understand what the numbers are, what the differences are, so we can have some kind of a better grasp on what the magnitude of the problem is. And I think our police department is constantly looking for ways to improve with the way we interact with the community, and that's why I don't think it's fair to say the study should only focus on Urbana, and that is what was said two weeks ago. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Is that a hand up, Bill?
Not a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I admire the mayor's defensiveness of Urbana, and it's understandable. I think that Urbana has been unjustly accused, and I think that people can identify with being unjustly accused in a lot of senses. But at the same time, I won't correct figures. I think they're pretty close. My figures for students were a little bit lower. I think the idea is the same. Our disparity ratio probably is lower than Champaign. I think two weeks ago, I tried to focus on not comparing our ratio to other cities because of that very point, that every city is different, our driving population is different, our demographics are different, where people live in relation to where they work is different. So the main use, I thought, for using the disparity ratio was to see which direction it went, what trend it was going in, and it has been going down. I think we've made improvements. So at the same time, I think that it's worth studying. I think people came to Urbana because they understand that we are sensitive to a lot of racial equity issues. We always have been, and that's why they chose us. So I don't feel bad about that. So I did send around a proposal. I'm not sure what the actual procedure should be, whether we can appoint a task force as an ad hoc committee of the committee of the whole, or if it has to be forwarded to council. So I'll make a motion to either forward this to council or establish the task force. Does anybody have an idea how that should work?
Well, you'd want to make a motion. It would need to be seconded and approved, and that would go to council then for approval.
Okay, so everything, okay. Then I would make a motion to establish this traffic stop task force for the purpose of studying racial disparities reported in the Illinois Department of Transportation traffic stop data. This task force would, one, be charged with making quantitative and qualitative assessments of traffic stop data reported as part of the IDOT traffic study in order to increase understanding and provide guidance on eliminating racially disparate impacts. Two, the task force should be composed of 11 members. At least two members would have education, expertise, and statistics. One council member may serve on the task force. Five members shall be appointed from nominations supplied by the community organizations that petition for the creation of a task force, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, local NAACP, local ACLU, Ministerial Alliance, and League of Women Voters, with one representative from each. Other members should be chosen based upon their knowledge and understanding of sociology, law enforcement, or other relevant experience. Applications should be received through January 31, 2014, and the task force would be appointed in February 2014. The task force will establish a regular time and place for a monthly meeting in city facilities following the Open Meeting Act. Meetings should be audio-recorded with audio posted to the Urbana website. The task force would elect a chair and secretary to record minutes. City staff would provide reasonable clerical and advisory support as requested. The task force would provide at least bimonthly progress reports. The task force will report findings in writing on or before February 2, 2015. The report would include findings as to the suggested use of data reported in the IDOT study going forward, and recommendations for improving city policies in order to eliminate any racially biased policing and reduce existing disparities. The report will be available for public comment for a period of 30 days, and written comment received will be included in the final report. So that's my motion.
And I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? Eric?
Yeah, I'm not ready quite to support anything that's specific, so I'm going to do like old folks do and meander just a little bit, if I may. I think that, you know, we've talked about, people have talked about relying on experience, personal experiences on the one hand, or statistics on the other hand. I think we can't really make this an either-or thing. I think we have to understand the statistics in order to figure out whether what we're talking about is widespread or merely anecdotal. And on the other hand, I think that the personal experiences are absolutely vital. My experience in being a father to an African-American son and then other readings make it really clear to me that to most white Americans, the issue of what actually happens when a black man confronts a white police officer, we're really, we tend to be really very blind to that. We tend- We tend not to, you know, we tend just not to imagine it properly, and we tend to discount the feelings that that engenders, and I would say the feelings on both sides. The feelings of anger, the feelings of fear, and so forth. We can have the wisest, we can have the best training and the wisest policies in the world, and we're not going to erase a couple of hundred years of our racial history in the United States with that very easily. I would say, I, it's been said that the goal of this study should be to eliminate the disparity. I would have, I do favor somehow enlarging the scope of the people who are involved in this, whom we ask to be involved in this beyond the Citizens Police Review Board, beyond the Human Relations Commission. On the other hand, I do think that those bodies should be involved in the formation of this group. I don't think we should bypass them completely, and I haven't really worked out, you know, how to do that. But I think that the goal that we should, and I also think, you know, I'm of two minds as to whether we should attempt to study a broader geographical area or not. I actually do believe that the city of Urbana, for all its failings, is probably better than Champagne and better than the rest of the county. Maybe this is just Urbana chauvinism, but this is my feeling, and I think there is evidence to that. And so one of the advantages of focusing on Urbana is that I think we can have a conversation in which we can, with a lot of effort, get people to be honest with each other. And I think that if we expand the geographic area, that that may be much, much more difficult, even though I think that they have actually probably worse problems than we do. But what I would put forth as the goal of the study is that, at the end of the day, people coming from all sides of the political spectrum, people coming from all kinds of personal experience, whether that be racial, professional, whatever, people who are professional statisticians, people who are scientists, and people who are totally different from the kind of nerds that populate my world largely, that all of us should have a common understanding of what's going on and what these numbers mean as much as possible. So I don't know how to effect that, but I guess I should have thought about it, you know, more, so I don't have as detailed a proposal as Bill does. I also just want to mention a really terrific book that I've just finished reading. It's called High Price by a man named Carl Hart. And Carl Hart is an African-American who grew up in a very, very tough neighborhood in Miami. And somehow, by virtue of possibly good fortune, one of his pieces of good fortune was that he never actually got caught doing all the things that he might have been caught for breaking the law, and he ascribes a lot of his later success to the fact that he didn't get in the hands of the criminal justice system. But he is now a professor at Columbia University, an Ivy League school. He's a neuroscientist, and he specializes in addiction. And he has really amazing things to say about the connection between his research and the war on drugs and his personal experiences in terms of spanning these worlds that he has somehow succeeded in spanning. But what I would, and I only mention this book because I would like to see us somehow span these worlds, so that both the statisticians and the scientists and anybody walking down the street would feel, yes, we have come to some understanding of what is going on in our community. So I want to support anything that's going to take us in that direction. I think that we should go beyond, you know, business as usual or business as we have done. I don't agree with the assertion that we've made no progress since this report was, since this issue first came up. I think we have made progress. I think that Chief Connolly has done a terrific job, but I think there's somehow more community building that needs doing. So, Bill, I support the spirit of your motion, but there are a lot of details that I probably am not quite ready to sign on to yet.
Anyone else want to speak to this first? Dennis?
I think Eric was pretty much on the right track. I think I kind of agree with it. In some ways, I think we're not, that no matter what we find in these, no matter how we rehash the statistics, I think generally, the Urbana Police Department is doing the best job that they can under the assumptions and the rules of the operation that they have. And yet, I also feel that there are, we've heard that there is a feeling of injustice and that people doing very common things that I, as a white man, wouldn't think twice about sometimes cause anxiety and real life experience changes for people who are of other colors. So I think that there can be those instances that happen, and we've heard, you know, stories brought forward about what would seem to me to be inappropriate stops, either on the street or in the car. What to do about that? I think that you've come to Urbana because you feel like if there's going to be a conversation anywhere in the county, it would have to probably be in Urbana. I think because there's a chance here that people have larger hearts and more understanding than business as usual or just to make this cut and dry. So this is uncomfortable in some ways, and as a city council person, you like to support the image of the city as being well-prepared, smart, cooperative, and all the other things that make us proud of the community and of our forces. And yet, we can't just be, we can't have our hands over our ears and not understand that there is still some work that must be done. At first, I wasn't really that excited about this discussion about the task force, but Bill has prepared something that seems like maybe a workable structure to begin with. I'd have to, I'd have to say that I'd really like to see a more defined plan that we actually choose to approve. I don't want to approve a plan that is loosey-goosey or just kind of not generally well-thought-out. I mean, there are some basic structures here, but how to ensure that there's going to be real success, how to know how to pick the people, and who will be picking, the members of the task force. There's been a suggestion that the current commissions that we have in place don't really reflect the needs of the community, that they're not responsive. And there's a part of me that feels that because of the limitations of their purview of action, that in a sense, that's true. We do have a place to bring complaints, and that's the Civilian Police Review Board, but so very few complaints are brought, and I think in the history of the review board, it's only been one or two that have actually been processed. And yet, we hear that there's concerns going on and on in the community of the African-Americans. So it can't be quite the right solution. So I don't want to see the commission given carte blanche. I want to see a real structured approach to the commission or the task force that might get appointed. I guess I'm just saying that I'm pretty open to it, and more details, if they would come. Maybe we need to have another week or two to talk about what those details really are before I could sign off on it. But I'm not afraid, and I think it'd be useless for us to be too afraid, to try to be too protective, because I don't think there's anything to protect. I think really, all we have here is an opportunity to explore a very serious topic and maybe build a ground of agreement and find out that we really don't have that much to adjust to reach a beneficial solution. That's what I'll say.
Anyone else like to speak? Carol?
So I just want to back up for a second because the council already voted to establish a task force. This recommendation is written in, I just realized, in the sense that says to establish a task force. That was voted on unanimously already. The question at hand is how to establish the task force, who to participate, composition, you know, how to apply and when to start. I think those are the actual questions that are the meat and potato of what Bill has put forward here. I just want to say that on the county board, which was shared, there was a task force that was established to study jury selection, and the purpose of that task force was to look into why we still had all-white juries in Champagne County. I agree with the mayor that there is a county-wide problem. You look at the statistics, there's a disparity everywhere. But that particular task force included, it didn't have all the meat and potatoes when it was passed at the county board. It wasn't drawn out, we only want you to look at this kind of task force. The chief judge decided to serve on it because he believed that not only was there a perceived problem, but there was a real problem that he wanted to participate in. So the chief judge participated, as well as many of his staff, many people from the county, as well as community members. And some of those very same community members that were on this, that brought this forward, also served on that jury task force. Initially going in, many county board members didn't think that that group of people could actually come together and produce a body of work that would benefit Champagne County because people had fear. They were afraid. They didn't want to acknowledge that there were still problems in the system, but they went forward anyway, and they did produce several things that could impact, and I think have impacted, the number of people serving on juries in Champagne County. That's just one example of how these task forces work. They started off one way, but they ended up finally coming together as a body and presenting a body of work that I believe that all of those members, including the league and several of these community groups, were proud to have participated in. In this case, the hesitation is whether the numbers are right, or, but that, I don't think at the heart of it has much to do with anything except that the people came to Urbana because that's where the number exists this year. It has existed in Urbana, Champagne County, but the city council here cannot tell Champagne County nor the city of Champagne what to do in relationship to their disparity. The community groups can go to them and say, this is something you need to look at about your disparity. I'm certain that will happen. But in this case, we can't shut the responsibility or say that we're better than Champagne in some way because ours is slightly smaller than theirs might be. It's, that's somewhat inappropriate, in my opinion, to even do such a thing and make that kind of a comparison. And what we are asking for at this point is establishment of a task force, for the council to say, what do you want the composition to look like, and what's the general goal of that particular task force? If those three things are not what the council agrees with, then that's what we probably should be talking about. The vote of establishing it has already taken place, and unless someone is willing to rescind that vote through the proper procedures, that task force was already voted on. How we composition that task force has not been voted on, that's why it's at committee still, so that we can decide how to put it together. And so I'm not disagreeing with the CPRB participating or any other group participating. I don't disagree with that at all. I think it should actually require more people to participate. I recommended fifteen members and not eleven, but that's neither here or there. I still believe that the composition of the task force need to be discussed here, and if it's not ready to go out of committee, then that's something that we can talk about, keep it in committee so that we can develop that part of the process. But to use some of the statements that have been made to justify it, I think is still inappropriate, and we should move forward from a good position of establishing a committee that can work together and look at this and study it and come out with factors that we can actually improve and not necessarily repeat what we've already done.
Charlie?
I've been trying to wrap my brain around how to analyze traffic data for some time. It's come up several times in the last thirteen years. It's a difficult task, and it's further complicated by sociological issues. In fact, I think it's mostly a sociological issue. I'm not going to go into all the statistics that I can find to criticize about it, but, you know, if you really wanted to do this from a statistical point of view, you'd get a sample of actual traffic, you know, of actually who's driving in traffic at different locations and time and all that, so you'd have a really good estimate of what the driving population is. Trying to figure out what the census numbers are, especially when half the population, half the stops are non-residents, that automatically throws it into question. I think it's really simplistic to try to reduce policing to a single number, and a correlation, no less, that is as meaningless as the Baptist ministers and county population that I'm so fond of using. The number jumps around, it has some trends, it's around the state, and, so it's a number we have to live with. The real issue to me, and I'm just going to jump over all the other stuff I say about statistics here, the real issue to me is a sociological one. Clearly, there's been profiling in the past, and we know that racism and prejudice take many forms and continue to this day. We recognize the driving while black issue, but I also think Urbana policing has changed from what it was twenty, let alone ten years ago. When we were asked about profiling several weeks ago, I sort of, you know, I was the first person asked, and I wasn't sure where Dr. Parenti was coming from, but I now recall my own experience with it as a bearded, long-haired traveler in the seventies. Now, many of you may not, you know, think of me as having long hair, but I used to have it to here, and I had a big bushy beard, and I fit the hijacker profile of the seventies. And every time I flew, and I flew a lot as a teenager and in my twenties, because I liked to travel, and I traveled to my mother's home country a number of times. So I got the full search treatment every time. I missed a flight back home to here because I was detained in customs for like four hours. In my mother's home country, I had to avoid military checkpoints because fear of getting hauled away for a haircut, and I was relieved when that particular military dictatorship was moved to democracy. So, you know, it exists. I can relate to it. I would not want to be, you know, it's not possible for me to relate to the experiences that a black man has to go through every day in this country. I have an inkling of it because of my experiences. At the current time, though, I'm not willing to spend a lot of money trying to understand history. I don't see how beating on this particular police, this particular study is going to help us solve a sociological problem. I'm interested in whether or not we are doing the policing in the best possible and fairest way today. What can we do better tomorrow? I'm interested in knowing what the current police department is doing and how and if, and if and how it's different from the past, what additional steps can be taken to improve the community policing and so on, and what can we do going forward? I'm interested in dealing with economic disparities, which I think are a big part of the problem. I'm interested in ending the drug war and ending perceptions of injustice. So I'd like to keep this item in So, I'd like to keep this item in committee a little longer and build on the idea of exactly what the mandate and the plan is. We're getting there, we're circling around it and people have ideas, but I don't think it's quite ready for prime time. And frankly, I would love to invite the county in Champaign to participate on it because I think it's more than, because like I said, it's more than just the single number on the police department. It's a community-wide issue and it doesn't stop at Wright Street. Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak who hasn't spoken yet in this round? Bill?
Yeah, just to reiterate, this is not a costly study. It would have no cost except I put in in line, city staff will provide reasonable clerical and advisory support as requested, plus the cost of facility to meet in. We could take that out if that bothers people to get rid of all the costs. I think this is a good start. I left it empty. Who would do the appointment? Hopefully, we could fill that in. And I, you know, I agree, it's a, it's a county-wide project problem, it's a nationwide problem. I don't even know if it's an Urbana problem. I'm, I'm expecting to learn that from the results of this study. So, I think this is a starting point. I think it's, I don't think we need to get too detailed with, you know, specific, specific goals. I think we made it, I, I tried to make it broad enough so that the committee could kind of figure out, other than, you know, looking at the racially disparate impacts and the, and the data, what their, what their goals could be. We could have them come to council and have us approve goals, but I don't think we need to do that. It's a one-year study, we would get a report, we would have a chance to comment on it, other public members would have a chance to comment on it. I think it'd be a learning experience. It involves five groups that all have a high Urbana presence, so I think it is appropriate for Urbana to sponsor in, in heart, if not in money, this study. So, I still think that we can go forward with this.
Mr. Madigan, would you take the chair? I'd like to speak to this issue.
Sure. I, I just had a few comments on this issue and I wanted to make sure that people knew where I was coming from on this. I do believe we need to examine traffic, traffic stops in Urbana. That's the issue that was brought to us, that's the report that was given to us and that's where we should focus our efforts. I'd like to focus it on the, over the course of the next year. I want to look at both the experiences of the community and I want to look at it from the, from the purpose of establishing facts. I want to get what's happening right now in the city of Urbana and getting accurate numbers. And I disagree with the contention that numbers don't matter. Numbers are what's driving this discussion, so I want to have the accurate numbers as well as the experience of people. We have to have valid assumptions and the assumptions behind this IDOT traffic, DOT traffic study, I believe are flawed and we need accurate information. And I will not support taking any action based on the current IDOT traffic stop data and I have a number of reasons for that, which I'll share with you. And I'm going to zip through these because we have an hour and a half left in our official meeting time, at which time our front door gets locked and we'll have to have someone, number one, we'll have to extend the meeting and number two, we'll have to have someone standing at the door to make sure we're complying with open meetings. So, we do need to move this discussion along. My, my concerns with the traffic stop data are the following. It is based on the assumption and the basic assumption behind this entire study is that the driving population in Urbana reflects the census population demographics. And for a city like Urbana, which has some very unique characteristics, this is not an assumption you can make. We have an enormous university, in fact, we have more students at the university than people. We are the county seat, which brings in hundreds of people every day. We have two regional medical centers, two courthouses, the county jail, the county nursing home, plus a number of business centers. We have thousands of people coming to Urbana for employment reasons, for educational reasons, for recreational, for business, for medical and other purposes. We are a large city, we are a small city with a very large daily influx of non-residents who are driving on our streets and who are included in this traffic stop data. And that factor is not reflected in the traffic stop data. We also have, as was pointed out, thousands of students who live in Urbana but who do not drive in Urbana and that impacts the accuracy and validity of these assumptions behind this data. The traffic stop data doesn't differentiate between the residents and non-residents of Urbana, yet people are using the population demographics of Urbana alone as the benchmark against which to measure the demographics of the traffic stop. You can't do that. You got to compare apples to apples for this. You can check ZIP codes and, and we did that and you can find that half the people stopped were non-residents. That has an impact on the accuracy of this data. As the chief pointed out, the traffic stop data is only as accurate as what is reported to it and there are issues with what is coming out of the Urbana Police Department and the chief is very upfront about that and, and that's something we can look at from here on out. But that impacts what we get back from the state of Illinois. And when you only have twenty-nine dog sniff searches, and I know, to say only twenty-nine is, is not an attempt to demean the, the impact of those searches, but that's out of three thousand seven hundred fifty-one stops. When you have a few errors at the local level, that can have a big impact on the data that's reported back from the state, as we saw. The IDOT traffic stop data doesn't provide, doesn't include traffic stops made by U of I police within the city of Urbana. A lot of, part of the city of Urbana is U of I campus and traffic stops made on campus are not included in this data. So, it's incomplete picture. And lastly, and probably, and most importantly in my mind, the state data doesn't provide any context for traffic stops. I totally agree, we need to understand what's going on, we need to know why the police are in a given location at a given time, why an officer initiates a stop and what happens after that and what transpires there. And we're not getting that. So, we're getting an incomplete picture and, and I do think, over the course of the next year, if we really put our minds to it, we can get accurate numbers, which are important. We can also get an accurate and complete picture from, based on the experiences of the people in the community and we need to do both. I find it surprising that people keep talking about the Human Relations Commission as being an internal or city commission. Yes, the chairman, it's supported by city staff, but the Human Relations Commission is composed of community members and to talk about them as if they're not part of the community is, is insulting to those people who have given their time and effort on this commission. Maybe they're not the, you know, we could, we could add to this, but they are community members who have volunteered their time for this community and they, they deserve every bit as, as much respect as any other committee that we would appoint. So, I, I, I guess my only, my main issue that I would take with Bill Brown's proposal is having a completely independent task force. We voted to have a task force, we didn't define what that was or who was going to direct it or how it was going to be made up and I am not, I did not assume that it would be completely independent of one of our existing boards and commissions. I think the Human Relations Commission can be the structure around which this task force is composed. We can add, we certainly have to add community members with an interest in this topic. We need people who are experts in certain areas, in specifically in statistics and data collection, analysis and that sort of thing. And we need representatives from the police department and whatever reasonable staff support and council input is, is reasonable. I know that Urbana police are ready to work with us on this task and I don't think anyone is very defensive. What I get defensive about is going forward without getting accurate information, both from the community and from the traffic stops. And I think from, going from here on out, that could, for the next year, we could say, "This is what we want. We want accurate numbers and we want context to give us a complete picture." So, that's my two cents. I'll take the chair back.
I wanted to ask Diane a question, actually.
Sure.
When you say going forward from here out, we want accurate information, are you suggesting that the council gathers this information in lieu of this?
No. No, I would say.
Can you clarify?
The, the committee, the commission, the group that we empower to examine this issue would, would develop a set of questions that they want answered and would then develop the framework for doing it. You know, we can, we want to focus on traffic stops, so that means working with the Urbana Police Department to get accurate data, but I say more complete data than what's being sent to the state of Illinois. We want context for the stops, at least I, I want to see context. And, and it would also mean getting input from the community as well and, and whatever that form that takes. But I think if we say, "Okay, for one year from like February to February," using the timeframe Bill suggests, "Let's see what one year in the city of Urbana looks like in traffic stops and make an effort to gather the very best information we can get on this topic, both from a community perspective and a people perspective, as well as a data perspective." And it, it might turn out that this would be informative to other communities and other public safety divisions. We might even get a publication out of it after all. I mean, this could be a model approach to this whole thing. But you got to have numbers and you got to have the social people perspective because that's the picture we need to look at. I just think that we should not view our Human Relations Commission as an, an internal, someone separate from the community because these are community members on the commission and it demeans them to say otherwise.
Any further questions for Diane?
I'll take it back. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Charlie?
Yeah, let me throw out a couple more ideas and questions here. I'm, I'm looking at your motion, Bill, and trying to, to, so the, the mandate is basically stated in your first sentence, "The charged with making quantitative and qualitative assessments of traffic stop data as reported in I dot traffic study in order to increase understanding and provide guidance on eliminating racially disparate impacts." Would you consider your mandate statement, then? That's the mandate.
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of, of, of what the task force would be, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, and Diane headed the same path, I think I, I am, a task force that is composed of both community members, police and, and other staff members that are, are needed and should be involved and, and the Human Relations Commission, which I think is a good forum for working through this. They meet monthly, they could form a subcommittee of, in an appropriate fashion. There are eight members on that committee and that, that seems to me something that could be workable. Of course, the question would be, are they willing to take the workload on and guide this along? So, that would, that would be a suggestion for, for one way because then, then it would, you know, work with all these other things that you have on here. The other issue is exactly what kind of, you know, when, when we talked about this two, three weeks ago, we talked about volunteers that would come out of the community to work on this. I got the impression that that would be a, a low-cost, no-cost, preferably no-cost effort because volunteers and, and experts would, would, would come forward to help with this. Frankly, I don't think you can beat these numbers to make sense out of them because when you have fifty percent of the stops being from out of the community, you're just not going to be able to establish a real underlying census number. So, I think, you know, no matter what you try to do with this, getting to real underlying numbers are just not going to work. And for me, I go back to the sociological issue that I raised earlier. So, you know, that, that sort of fits within the mandate of what you're saying on eliminating racially disparate impacts. It doesn't go quite as far as I would, which is to examine some of the economic ones, issues here, but, but maybe that can be stretched. So, I think this is almost there, but it's not quite. Like I said, the, the budget issues, the volunteer issues, how it would mesh with other groups, I, I think need to be worked out. Otherwise, I, you know, I, I think as, as Carol said, we already did commit ourselves to going down a path several weeks ago.
Dennis?
I think that without really, I'm, I don't feel confident that we can just say that the HBC is the, no, not HBC, the Human Relations, HRC is the, is the, could be the main structure of this because I don't see members of them here in the audience. They haven't shown specific interest in it, they haven't shown enough interest to come out tonight and discuss this with us. I, I think they're more a task-oriented body, but I think that it would make sense to make, ask them to be, to send, you know, two or three members of their commission to participate in this and maybe this should be a sub, a sub-commission under them or a sub, or sub-working force or task force under them. I mean, that might give it the, the city staff assistance that we're talking about, but I wouldn't assign them this position.
Mayor?
I think they, they understand that this is something that could be their job and it might not be the whole commission, but I think that could be the, the lead agency. They wouldn't all have to be on it, but I think there could be a mix. But there needs to be some kind of structure because there's no more people to assign to commissions. You do need some kind of staff help.
I mean, a mix is better than.
You know, I don't think we can afford to create some whole new structure.
Eric?
So, I guess this is a technical question perhaps for the mayor. Could this committee be staffed by the people who now staff the Citizens Police Review Board and Human Relations Commission?
Very easily because it's the same person.
Yes, right, right. Okay. And, and, and this, and this can be made part of his job description.
Right.
Okay, good.
Well, not job description, I mean, it's part of his work anyway. You don't have to change his job description.
Charlie, then Eric again.
Oh, well, what I was going to suggest is we keep this in committee, Bill and Carol go work with the mayor and, and the Human Relations Commission on figuring out these last little issues, the budget and what exactly, maybe a little clearer mandate and bring it back for quick approval and we could do it at our first council meeting in January. If you can get, the problem, I'm thinking of a timing issue now because we're getting into where lots of people are going to be on vacation and so on and so forth.
I, I think we could do that and, you know, just give you a cleaner outline.
And then have a full year to work on, on it? Yes, Eric?
Yeah, the only procedural thing is can we get a, can we get the document electronically to, you know, contribute to and perhaps get periodic updates as the versions iterate so that we could keep putting our, our, our hand in electronically as it develops?
Yeah, actually, the motion that passed a couple of weeks ago was to develop a structure based on what the council members want to do. So, this would be part of it. So, we put something together and of course, it would go out for your review, which takes a while.
Carol?
I don't think I'm clear on, this recommendation from Bill, after Bill and I had our meeting, was from our discussion, the committee prior, but what it sounds like to me now is that it's going to go back to the mayor and the mayor is going to put this together and give it back to the council, which is.
Oh, that's not what people said. They said work with you and Bill.
No, no, what you just said is what I'm addressing, not what Charlie said. So, I'm trying to clarify what is being put forward.
What I just said, that we're going to work with the staff and you and Bill to put something together and get it around to the council for their comments. That's what I said.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that that's what the process is going to be, that we will meet together to clarify that for the January sixth quick vote meeting and that this would be established because timeframe here is trying to stay with February. I'm not stuck on February, but nonetheless, that's what I'd like for us to do and not drag this on forever. So, there's a motion, so there needs to. So there's a motion, so there needs to be-
Well, actually, so it's sort of been amended here.
Well, not officially.
Yeah, a little bit, you know, it's, you know, Bill, Carol, could you, are you willing to accept the version of this that comes to council on January 6th would be my way of getting this forward?
Yeah, I'm willing. Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, so it remains in, let me just summarize, it remains in committee?
It goes to council January 6th.
It goes to council January 6th, and in between now and then, several council members will work with the mayor, the staff, including Chief Connolly, to develop a, flesh out this structure and proposal. And we will vote on it on January 6th. Okay. Do we have to vote on this? All right, all those in favor of what I just said?
Sure.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I vote aye, too. Okay, moving on to the next 10 items on our agenda. We're going to be good at this. Next up is ordinance number 2013-12-105, which is an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the North Campus and King Park Redevelopment Project area within the city of Urbana. And Tom Carino is here with the staff report.
Yes, thank you. You have before you an ordinance unsettling tax increment finance District 3. The purpose of TIF is to eliminate blighting factors and to promote the infusion of private investment in an area. TIF 3 has been successful in accomplishing these goals. Some private development projects made possible through TIF support include the Hampton Inn, Perkins Restaurant, the Durst Cycle Building, One South Apartment Complex, and the Provena Medical Office Building. Some public facilities that have been upgraded with TIF funds include King Park and King School. Some of the infrastructure improvements in the area include reconstruction of several streets, including Goodwin Avenue, Park Street, Church Street, Matthews Avenue. There have been sidewalks reconstructed throughout the area. There have also been, there's been upgrades to lighting throughout the area and a local match of UC2B. Even when the value for presence in Provena are separated out, the EAV in TIF 3 has grown by 518% over the life of the TIF, while citywide EAV has grown by 276% over the same time. That would indicate that EAV growth has actually been higher in the TIF area and outpaced EAV growth citywide, both qualitatively and quantitatively. It appears that TIF 3 has been successful. Related to the closeout, the remaining unspent funds in TIF 3 will be surplus back to the various taxing districts participating in TIF. So pending transfer of funds related to Provena taxes and interest into an escrow account, pending transferring funds into an escrow account for obligations related to the Hampton Inn redevelopment agreement, and then pending final expenses related to projects in TIF 3. City staff will reconcile what's left in TIF for distribution to the various taxing districts. We are still working on that, and that there's a lot of moving parts related to that, but we're moving forward with finalizing TIF 3, and staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Charlie?
I move that we send ordinance number 2013-12-105, an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund, TIF 3, to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion, Charlie?
Yeah, Tom, I'm looking forward to the analysis of all of the TIF districts and along the lines of what you just said. So it's good to hear that number. At least TIF 3 was successful.
Derek?
The one other thing that would be great to have, you know, when we come back to this next year, is can you look at the expenditures in the TIF district, compare those to the increase in the tax revenue, let's say, based on the difference between the growth of the, between the growth of assessed value there and what we would expect if it was just like the rest of the city, and see what kind of a payout we have, you know, how many years are we getting everything back? Because there are people who still doubt the efficacy of any TIF program. Some of them may even be in this room, and so it would be good to arm ourselves with that.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next up is ordinance number 2013-12-106, which is an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, which is 2911 East Anthony Drive. We'll have a staff report on this, and then I have two more members of the public who wish to speak. Libby Tyler?
So this would be the first of the six lots, and while Berry Acres coming forward for annexation, it is 2911 East Anthony Drive, and I think we've heard some of the background here, this is an after-the-fact annexation. These are always difficult. In this case, the question of contiguity was very difficult to establish. It was, had changed through the years owing to a lawsuit with one of the local fire districts with some changes in state law, different case law, and it took many years before the contiguity could be established following the annexation of Berenger Commons. I would say that annexing these properties pursuant to an annexation agreement is how the city grows. And after-the-fact annexations have occurred for Berenger Commons, Country Squire, Somerset Subdivision, many of you will remember that, not too long ago, portions of Timber Hills, not too long ago, portions of Scottswood Subdivision, not too long ago. The city would never have approved this subdivision without the annexation agreement. That's how we control development, how we control growth. If we can't extend our boundaries to the north, we will never be able to extend further north, where there is land that can be subdivided and hopefully eventually provided with sewers that would then benefit this particular area. The city does not itself provide sewer and water. We do provide other services, and had met with these property owners and talked about fire protection. And granted, there are also good rural providers of services as well, but we are in the business of urban development. This was plotted at an urban density with the expectation, under an agreement, that there would be, the city would follow this agreement in annexing, and the property owners would provide their petitions, as this first property owner has done. So some of the services that we've met with the property owners and discussed have been our fire protection department. They do have a lower ISO rating. We would hope and expect that that would result in a lower insurance cost. It's a different level of police protection, city police versus the county. We talked about some of the public works items that are offered, recycling, leaf collection, snow and ice removal, library service would be another, city representative would be Ward 5 in this case. I guess, let's see, in terms of the timeline and bringing people forward, we have worked for the last several months to see if we couldn't have people come forward voluntarily and without having to get into the legal situation, which, as time is running out, that is beginning to become a necessity. But I really do feel that we have an obligation, city of Urbana has an obligation to follow this annexation agreement. If we wish to grow and develop in a planned manner, we do need to keep pace with our corporate boundaries. So I do realize it's difficult, and it's never, never a welcome opportunity, although rarely, I suppose, and in this case, maybe there's been many years where they've had the benefit of the proximity and the benefit of the approval without actually having to pay for the municipal taxes. So that might be a positive for the residents. Bill Gray, did you want to talk about the sewer-water proximity or the roads?
Sanitary sewers, all city residents pay a sewer benefit tax, and through the years where there are properties that are not served by sanitary sewer, we've extended those sewers so that we can cover those properties, so they can have public sewer system. The Berenger Commons subdivision does have sanitary, public sanitary sewer services. The idea would be to, at some point in the future, whether it's this project or some other project, someday would be to put a sanitary sewer, probably an interceptor-class type sewer, a larger diameter sewer, to serve a larger area, you know, north of Interstate 74. For this meeting tonight, I did not personally look at the plan, but the sanitary district does have what's called a sanitary sewer master plan, as to how they would service those areas within their facility, planning area with sewers. So that's a situation that could happen in the future, whether it be this subdivision or other possible properties north of Interstate 74. As you may recall, we looked at a very large area being served by extending sewers east of High Cross Road and south of Windsor Road down to Curtis Road. It's like a 3,000-acre area with a large pump station located near the Village Inn, former Village Inn Pizza area. We haven't looked at searing an area, you know, north of Interstate 74, but it's possible. Again, not looked into those details. As far as, so that's sanitary sewer discussion. As far as water main extensions are concerned, I believe near High Cross Road, there's water. It was not extended, perhaps at the subdividers doing, they're not mandated to do that. When they don't mandate extending water main, public water to lots, then they have to have larger lots to meet public health and county codes, lot size codes, so that you have private, well, private sewer in the same lot. But it may not be out of the question if and when this subdivision wanted to pay to extend water to the lots, that could happen. But the city does not get involved with that situation. That's typically with Illinois American Water and the benefiting properties. As far as roads are concerned, the existing road, Anthony Drive, is a chip and seal road. We would maintain it as such, as a chip and seal road, and we would maintain it properly, just like the township has maintained it properly in the years in the past.
Just another point, in terms of city boundaries, we do have growth constraints to the south in particular, because of University of Illinois acquisitions that were actually contrary to an earlier comprehensive plan. To the west, obviously, the city of Champaign. To the east, we have sewer limits. So the north is a very important area for us to grow, and there are areas to the north of this property that will be good residential development in the future, according to our comprehensive plan. And it's important to those properties and to the city that we would be able to annex those properties and approve an urban level of development to take place. And looking at an aerial photo here and seeing that, you know, many years in the future, perhaps, but this is really how we grow, so. Any questions?
Mayor pressing?
Yeah, I was wondering, is the infrastructure already in place under I-74 to connect with the?
No.
So would that, is that a really hard thing to do, to go under an interstate like that?
It's expensive, and again, you'd want to look at, from a planning perspective and putting a sewer in, you would want to look at a large area, not just this five or six lots we're talking about here.
Sure, okay. Okay, because-
And it would be a discussion we would have with the sanitary district.
We do have a rule now that you can't have a subdivision without having the sanitary sewer. So this subdivision must have been built before that, right?
In our mile and a half, there are subdivisions that do not have public sanitary sewer. I can think of a few of them, but the Brick House subdivision is one example. We're looking at one currently in the Cottonwood Anthony Drive area that would be a private septic system. So some areas in the mile and a half will not be necessarily served in the near future with public sanitary sewer.
Okay. Eric, and then Bill?
So who would pay for the sanitary, how would the sanitary sewer extension be paid for?
Again, if they're in the city of Urbana, historically, we have looked at extending those sewers to those lots in our corporate limits. In this case, again, it would probably be a larger diameter sewer to serve beyond this subdivision, which would probably involve, the sanitary district involves. So to answer your question, it may be some cost sharing between the sanitary district to pay for a larger pipe, and maybe a deeper pipe, but the city would pay effectively for an eight-inch diameter sewer.
But these would be public dollars, the homeowners would not pay.
That is correct. The homeowner would pay for the sewer lateral from the house to the proposed public sewer.
Bill?
Just a couple of questions for Libby, I think. So for this subdivision, there was a contiguous annexation agreement, so that when they developed subdivision, they knew about it ahead of time. How does that get down to the homeowner, when the homeowner changes, when the home changes hands? Is it attached to a deed, or is it part of the title or anything like that? Do they get notice when they buy a house?
It's in the covenants for the subdivision, so a due diligence acquisition should disclose that. But as we all know, oftentimes, it's fine print, or perhaps a realtor did not disclose everything, and since it has been so many years, and I think we heard tonight, some knew, some weren't sure, and that's the problem with the after-the-fact, after a number of years, it can be very difficult because the memories fail at that point. But the agreement is an agreement binding, and there are provisions that are tagged to the land.
Okay, so it sounds like theoretically, it should have been part of those 100 papers you sign when you buy a house that you don't read. So the second question, I guess, is, well, I think maybe a couple, is there a time limit if we say didn't approve this tonight? They were talking about 30 days, 90 days, or something, and this has been obviously longer than that. Is there, what would happen in that case?
Well, I think, you know, there has been a delay, there's good reasons for the delay. We are going to come up against the 20-year term of the annexation agreement in 2014. Find the month for you. So I think delay, you know, some delay is probably not, a little bit of delay may not be consequential, but we're coming up against April, and if we are going to follow our legal responsibilities, that may make it more difficult to complete that obligation.
Our city attorney has a comment to make on that.
The agreement provided, or provides, that upon contiguity, upon the establishment of contiguity, that the property owner or owners would have 30 days. That provision in the agreement does not abrogate the general applicability of the statute of limitations, which is a 20-year statute of limitations on the written agreements, starting from the date that the agreement is executed, which was, I don't know the exact date, but 1994, so in April, I think Libby has the date, but in April 2014 is when the statute runs out, and which means that the city would lose its right, or for that matter, if the homeowners were interested, would lose their right to execute on the actual annexation of this property.
And then just one more. Would this annexation, if all properties were annexed, create another daisy chain annexation possibility? Would it connect to another subdivision with the same type of agreement?
I don't think there's one immediate, but there's potential. There's properties that we talked about, subdividing that would be non-contiguous.
Oh, sorry. Dennis, and then Mike. Dennis, and then Mike.
And then so...
Carol.
He asked me.
Okay.
And so the people who are on the north side of the street, who are still in the county and who are not being asked to, not, not being considered at this time for annexation, what's the status of that property? If they, if they've become contiguous because four or five properties below them are, are they going to be then potentially annexed as well? And will that entire subdivision then be under the jurisdiction and the services and the, for the street maintenance and the water become a single action?
On the north side of Anthony, there's a separate subdivision that predated this and did not have an annexation agreement. They would only likely become annexed if they chose to petition because of the contiguity or if that area became wholly surrounded. And you'll recall, if it's wholly surrounded by city limits and is under 60 acres, then that can come in automatically.
Mike?
Libby, can you or someone else tell us what kind of tax revenue this would generate for the city, based on the current EAB?
I have some tables. I'd have to add them up. Might take me a minute. I can give you some examples here.
And then we can obviously, I mean, I'm sure the value of the homes out there varies somewhat, but they're all somewhat similar. And I'm wondering if you just, yeah, if you just divide, divide that number by six, we're going to find out just how much these folks are going to be paying for next to nothing.
Yeah, actually, I have some sample sheets that were prepared for one of the meetings that we had. And, you know, maybe I won't give the addresses, but here's one example that would go from property tax estimate before annexation, 4,338, after annexation, 5,448, to the, and this is, I think, the largest lot, so to the city would be 787. And then maybe a more typical lot size would go from 2852 to 3582 to the city, 518. So we're probably talking $4,000 to $5,000 a year to the City of Urbana total for the whole subdivision.
Okay, so a little less than a grand a year per household, $750, $800 on average. And the services that they would be afforded are no city water, no city sewer, and I understand the city doesn't provide that, but it's not there.
Yeah, we don't have, there's no such thing as city water, city sewer.
No water.
It's whether it's, it's whether, you know, well, it's septic.
Fair enough, fair enough. My mistake, fair enough. So none of that infrastructure is there, or likely will be, potentially for decades. And they're going to have a snowplow, and they're going to have city police instead of county police, and they're going to have city fire instead of township fire. I mean, I, I understand what everyone is saying here in that there was, there's been an agreement in the fine print for years, but I, I think folks ought to be very cognizant of what this is doing to these folks. It's making them pay more during an economic hard time anyway for really no, no improvement in services to them, because they're being provided most of these services through the other taxing districts that they pay now. So that's my difficulty with this.
Charlie?
I have a question for our attorney. Could we negotiate a new annexation agreement that, if it were acceptable to the six owners, push this out to a different date, maybe to the time when we actually could provide a city sewer or something like that, or when there was a bigger, a bigger development in the works as well?
From a legal perspective, the parties could negotiate that which they are willing to negotiate from a pragmatic perspective. One problem would be, to the extent the city has a master plan for growth and development north, that would be either slowed or stymied. And two, you would be negotiating with six separate parties. Now, maybe they would all negotiate similarly with the same view, or maybe they would elect not to negotiate. They run out the statute of limitations. At this point, they might have a view of, there's no reason to negotiate, so they could say, "We're not going to negotiate." We maybe express a willingness, but that doesn't mean that they are.
We could, we could put a window on that, but, you know, I mean...
We certainly have not extended annexation agreements and the substantial subdivisions that I've just referenced that we've annexed after the fact.
There is one other practical fact. Since 2011, the city has reached out to these folks. I guess there was a meeting at which a number of residents attended and spoke and expressed their concern. Couple of letters requesting the execution of annexation petitions, that's the process, were sent out and not responded to. And ultimately, with the first parcel, I believe it was Ms. Hamilton, is it? The city had to start, because they've got a statute of limitations running against it, the city had to initiate litigation proceedings. That brought the property owner to sign such an agreement. And a second one with Mr. Gustafson, second suit has been filed. And I don't know exactly what the status is right now. I think we're in the process of service unless Mr. Gustafson has already been served. If the statute of limit passes, then those parcels which have not executed petitions would frankly have, if I were them, have little or no reason to come to the bargaining table, unless there's some kind of an agreement struck before the statute of limitations. But still, given the process of litigation and the way the statute of limitations is set up, suits would have to be filed against everybody before the limitation period. After that, any negotiation that anyone is willing to participate in could be undertaken, assuming parties wanted to negotiate.
Carol?
So I just want to clarify that the only reason why this is, at this point at the council in this manner is because there hasn't been a way to execute the annexation agreement prior to this point, except through litigation going forward. Is that, do I have that understanding right?
Well, the agreement was duly executed. The annexations required contiguity of the corporate limits, the city limits. That contiguity was complicated because of the interchange, because of some lawsuits, because of jurisdictional dispute with one of the fire districts, but also with the township some years ago, that made following up on the annexations problematic. Those have all been resolved. There's been clarifying laws that have been passed. We feel we are on firm, a firm stance now to get, get the annexations done within this time limit. And, you know, just to throw in another point, I know in the capital improvement plan, there's a great map that shows you the vast portion of the city that is in the city because of annexation agreements. That's truly how we've grown. We would be, maybe half the size, you know, 50, 60% of the size if we were not able to use this tool and follow up consistently.
And I, can I follow up just quickly? If, if this property is not annexed and the annexation agreement expires, does that preclude the growth to the north side? Can it still take place without this particular set of property? Or is it just...
It would be very difficult to...
You can't go around this, let's be...
Build the densities. I mean, you know, maybe, it wouldn't be able to develop in the urban form that our comprehensive plan envisions. It would pretty much stay more rural, unincorporated. And another reason why I think, it's only six lots, right, but they're important because of the contiguity and because of our future plans and the difficulty in expanding in other directions.
Okay. Okay, we, we have two members of the public who wanted to speak, and I want to make sure they get their, their opportunity, and then we'll have council discussion and we'll go from there. Mason Armstrong?
Hello, I'm Mason Armstrong. I am the newest member to Wildberry subdivision. I've been there five years. When I signed that stack of papers, there was nothing in that stack of papers that said there was an annexation agreement. I looked over them tonight. I never found a single piece of paper saying that I was going to be annexed. I moved from the City of Champaign, which I still own the house over there, to Wildberry, which I really never even knew the name of the subdivision until I found out through all this, for the purpose of being out of the town. I have a burn pit, I love fires.
Sir, could you, could you, I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
I have a burn pit. I'm going to be the one that you guys are going to be complaining about, because I don't keep my yard the best. My neighbors, when they have a problem with me, they come to me. They tell me, I take care of it. We all, there's six houses. A friend of mine, you all know, Steve Holt, for some reason didn't think this was possible. I've talked to him a couple of times. Somehow, they say it's possible to get annexed in. Okay. You're going through legal terms for, is this gentleman, Mr. Madigan, $700 a year in taxes? You're going to take us to court, you're going to force us to be in a city, you're going to give us rules that we don't want. Mr. Attorney, if you would sit down and talk to us, we would be glad to come to some negotiations with you. Because I, myself, I don't care about city water, which I know is not city. I don't care about water, I don't care about sewer. Two houses up, there's a fire hydrant. If I want to pay the fee to run the pipe to my house to have city water, I can do that. But that just makes it easier for my neighbors across the street to hook in, because I paid the fee to run that pipe. I don't want to pay that fee. If I want city sewer, if, actually, my understanding, and to answer your question about septic tanks, 15 years, all depends on what kind of ground you're putting them in. My wife and I are the only ones in our house. Ours could last 20, 30. It all depends just what goes through them. So our sewer, our septic system could last for as long as we're in that house. So city, the sewer, I don't care. For what you're giving me, I'm not getting any benefits. I'm sorry. I'm happy with county. Urbana Police Department, great. Urbana Fire Department, I know a lot of Urbana Fire Department, great. I'm sorry, if my house burns, the guys out there, the volunteers, they're going to fight just as hard to save my house as they would anybody else's. And Urbana Fire Department's going to drive past two fire stations, all depends which way they go, Carol or Ed Scott, to get to my house. So you're not offering me anything. You're going to actually take away rights, because my driveway's not even going to be wide enough for you, because I have two RVs, two pickup trucks, and a Jeep. And some of them are sitting in the grass. We get annexed in, you're going to be first ones to tell me, widen my driveway. Okay? So what I'm getting is, you're wanting us in, six properties, you're saying you won't be able to expand. You're a city. You're already out on O'Brien Avenue, I mean, out there on Cunningham. You've got O'Brien Auto Parks, you have Richardson Estates out there, there's other properties. You have subdivisions in this town that aren't even, that are surrounded, that aren't annexed into the city. You own property off of Washington Avenue. I think there's some apartment buildings up there off of Washington Avenue that the city owns lead to now, been sitting vacant for I don't know how long. You want to expand, do something with the blight. Don't come out in our neighborhood. Sorry, but we really don't want the city in our neighborhood. We like our privileges of having fires. We like our privileges of just being out there in the neighborhood. If you want to bring city water, well, I'm sorry, if they want to bring the water into our house, if they want to bring the sewer, they want us to let us have some privileges of being in a rural area, not a city neighborhood. I know you can't burn leaves, leaf collection, we burn our leaves. I have one tree on my property, it blows into my neighbor's yard, Mr. Randy Gustafson over here, so I don't have to rake my leaves. So, I mean, there's benefits where I'm at. If you come in and start telling us what to do, there's no more benefits to where I'm at, so why live there? Thank you.
Okay, and the last member of the public to speak would be Warren Lowry.
I want to pass, but everything you said.
Okay, all right. Further discussion. Bill?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out a few things and think about this a little bit, because I'm not ready to vote yet. First of all, Carroll Fire Protection District is really good. They're volunteers, but they are volunteers, and it takes them a while to get to the station. So they have to get to the station before they can come to your house, so it adds some time. I think our response time would be about six minutes, as opposed to about 12 from the estimate I got. So even though it's farther, this response time would be better, and that's why your insurance rate should go down theoretically if we did this. I guess the other comment I wanted to make was that in, living in close proximity to the city, you have benefited from parks that you haven't paid for so far, and lots of people do that, because we have lots, lots of people living in proximity. And one of the reasons we have these type of agreements where subdivisions should be annexed is because it recognizes that you would have a lot of people building subdivisions just outside a city, so they can benefit from parks and other things. And as far as libraries, parks, and, well, fire and police, we talked about, but libraries and parks, you also have this kind of intangible benefit. Even though I don't have kids, never will, I benefit from the schools because we have a more educated, more civil society. And that argument kind of works with parks and libraries, too. The kids that live around you, that, that your kids go to school with benefit from the parks, they benefit from having the library. If you want to pay for the library, you can attend, you can check things out from the library, and like you said, you have been. But the people that your kids go to school with in Urbana, most, for the most part, are already in the library district and park districts, and so they are benefiting. And so that benefits everyone indirectly. When, when most of us benefit, we all benefit, I guess. So I'm still undecided. Anybody else want to talk?
Dennis?
This is pretty hard. We, we have had other subdivision areas annexed because of arrangements that have been made before. The people who are buying the lots currently and living there now had the, had, well, because, because these pre-existing contracts for annexation have existed, certainly Long Airport Road, which is a lot farther away. But we are able to provide them with services that aren't being carried to this corner yet, so that's one concern, that's not very favorable. On the other hand, I think consistency of action makes a lot of sense for the city. We will become faced with many different kinds of people who have objections to being enclosed in the city, who live in a lot of different kinds of places. I guess for, for my, I guess one of my questions I have for Libby is, is the border of the city established because it has, because the expressway is, is now included in the city right of way? And also, it looks like the city map shows that the City of Urbana comes along the access road that extends along the north side of the off-ramp there. So is that, I, I don't see how much farther to the west city boundary is extended. And I, I don't know if there's a larger map that shows that or not, but...
Been looking at, and I can pass this around, I've been looking at our, I see some folks have the zoning map, but I have the future land use map, map two, Dennis, and that shows this area's rural residential. The area is, any, anything within our mile and a half, we have this subdivision Development Authority. And... And so, even back in the early 90s, we had comprehensive plans, different earlier version, and we look at that and see that this will be residential. It wasn't quite contiguous yet, so we approved the development with a provision that when it was contiguous, it would be annexed. And then we march along, and there is a limit, but this map will kind of show you that there is a very large area surrounding this. That's the zoning map. Let's send this around to Dennis, it's a comprehensive plan map. So, these two, these are the two tools that we've used, plus our annexation policies that have been in existence, and our jurisdictional arrangements, including a very important agreement that we made with the sanitary district and the City of Champaign and sanitary district back in the early 90s that pretty much put an end to rural subdivisions that wouldn't, could not be annexed. So, that was a bad planning practice for Champaign County that stopped in the early 90s.
Mike?
I'm coming back to Charlie's idea of talking to these homeowners about what could be done with an alternate agreement. And the, the residents running out the clock, I don't think that necessarily holds water because the council could still pursue, unless somebody tells me differently, I mean, the council could pursue a vote to annex later on. I mean, this process could, well, up until April. I mean, the paperwork, the machine could keep rolling here. We don't necessarily have to annex this piece right now, there are five other parcels. But maybe there could be an agreement that if other subdivisions in this immediate vicinity were to be platted and agreements made, that at the point that something becomes contiguous from, from the west or from the north, as opposed to across the interstate to the south, maybe then an annexation could happen.
I think the difference between now and back, when this annexation agreement was approved, was that the city had, the thing to bring to the table was approval of the subdivision. We don't have that to bring to the table right now. So, we approved the subdivision back then in exchange for the annexation. So, I'm not really sure what we would bring to the table in extending, creating a new annexation.
I think what you bring to the table is the fact that these folks won't have to pay another 700 bucks a year until there's development around them, which brings a sewer, which brings Illinois American Water, which brings value. Right now, we're not bringing value, we're just charging. We're charging 700 bucks. I mean, that's what we're doing. I understand Bill's argument about the parks and all that kind of thing, and that's fair. But I mean, 700 bucks, you know, a park, a library card, I don't know. I can see where they're coming from here.
It's just, goes against decades of practice by the city to, it's just been the way we've done this since the early 90s, that's how we've grown, that's how we've planned.
I'm not saying give up on the annexation, I'm saying maybe we talk to these folks about an annexation, annexation agreement that, that still fits with the city's policy of growth, but, but approaches it from, when, when some of these other fields, and they are farm fields at this point, adjacent to them, maybe are, maybe are developed. You could still have an annexation agreement. You, you could strike a new deal, I think. I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, and I don't see how that's counter to decades of city policy.
Possibly, I'm just not sure what our authority, that's my problem, I don't know what our authority would be at that point. I know previously, our authority was the subdivision approval.
Okay. Well, how about if we put us all out of our misery and move to defer this for two weeks and just try to hash that out?
Carol, did you have a comment? Okay. Charlie?
We, we don't defer things in committee, we keep them in committee. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Except we're not meeting until January.
So, if I can just ask you my question?
Yeah.
I just want to ask, although I do respect, you know, for a long time, retired.
I'm sleepy, it's the first time they got me. I respect the gentleman who spoke just a few minutes ago in public participation. All of the reasons why he moved out there in the first place, I completely understand. If it was up to my son, we would probably live out there next to you with a, with a horse, which is what he, what he would prefer to do. I'm wondering if, because this was passed 20 years ago, which none of us was here, of course, here we are, on the 19th year of an annexation agreement, that either we grow the city or not, is it possible then to do something as Mr. Madigan is recommending? If it expires, does that change the whole game? I guess I'm wondering.
Well, I can only speak from the legal perspective and from the perspective of the city. As I indicated before, two willing parties can negotiate just about anything they want. If the community or parts of the community want to renegotiate an annexation agreement, that can be done, assuming that all parties are willing to negotiate. If the statute of limitations passes, then it would only be up to the good faith of both sides, the city and the community, to enter into negotiation. There would be no basis whatsoever, absent statute on annexation itself, surrounding and size of parcel and all the rest of it, by which annexation could be compelled. We certainly couldn't litigate if that's what the city wanted. I'm not advocating litigation, other than whatever you all decide to do. Legal needs a timeframe to deal with the other five parcels, to protect the rights of the city. If something, if the parties want to negotiate, while all of that, and I think Mike Madigan suggested, Councilman, or Alder Person Madigan suggested, keep the process rolling. The process doesn't have to take on the adversarialness. If the parties are negotiating, it's just a matter of protecting the position of the city. But again, whether you want to do that or not is totally up to you all.
I have another point, if I might.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Previously, we were dealing with one party who sought to develop. Now, it's been developed because we gave the approval, and we have six parties. It's harder to get six people to agree than one. Also, what we're looking at tonight is not the annexation agreement that was passed, that was duly passed, that's law, that's been law for almost 20 years. So, that's done, it exists. What we have tonight is a first petition that's come forward to actually annex according to this previous agreement. So, the question is, are you going to accept the petitioner's petition? That's the, that's the item that's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah. Mike?
Well, I appreciate everything you're saying, but this council, to my knowledge, is not bound by a council 20 years ago and their agreement. We, if that was the case, I don't think we'd have to sit here and vote on something tonight. It would have happened automatically. We're here to vote on something, and we can either vote up or down on this annexation agreement, or else it wouldn't be put before us.
It's the annexation of the one piece.
I'm sorry.
The agreement's already been passed, and the agreement...
Let me re, sorry, let, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me take the word agreement out of what I just said, and all of it still makes sense. This is an annexation into the city of a parcel, based upon an annexation agreement agreed to by a city council and a mayor 19 years ago. We are not bound by that annexation agreement, to my knowledge, or we would not be voting on an annex, annexation this evening. This would be a fait accompli, it would just happen.
I think you are bound by that annexation agreement.
Well, then I guess we all have to vote yes right now.
And the...
That makes no sense.
Petition, you know, you can certainly reject the petition. I believe that will be the first time in Urbana's history that someone has tried to petition to come into the city and the city said, "We don't want you."
But she's petitioning under threat of legal action, okay? She's not a willing petitioner, Libby. I mean, I understand your point, but at the same time, this is a forced process, okay? All I'm suggesting here is that we, that we hold this for a couple of weeks and look at an alternative. And I think you might be surprised how six people might come to the table and say, "Okay, here are our choices. We can be forced through this process and have an annexation happen by, by or before next April, or we can work with the city on an alternative that may push the annexation out for a period of years when there's more development of the city in that area." That's all I'm suggesting. That's all I'm suggesting.
Charlie, and then Dennis, and then Eric.
Yeah, the scenario I was headed for was something like, and it would have to be an all or nothing. Six agreements, signed, ready to go by our next council meeting, our first, by our, our first committee meeting in January, which would be the 13th. So, it's, you know, 30, 30-plus days. That would extend this agreement out, say, 10 years, with the caveat that in the event that it's going to happen in 10 years, period, or it will happen sooner if there's contiguous development to them that needs to be part of the city. You know, and we have the sanitary district agreements that, that help drive those, but I would, it would have to be an absolutely quick, complete, six-party-plus-us agreement done in a timely matter, and, you know, something that would be back to committee here in, in, in January. I mean, that's the only way, I would accept something like that.
What's the need for January? What's driving the quick...
Because we need enough time to litigate if we don't have that, to get all the, to complete the process here of, of annexing the six pieces of property.
Yeah. I, I would like to pursue something like that too. In a way, what you're saying is that we're going to, we're going to pursue annexation, but we're offering annexation delay. And that has to be litigated with our, with our legal department, or drafted by the legal department. And I don't know, you know, what, you know, if that's, if that's an agreement between the city and the individuals, then all of them have to be signed on that, and they'll get, they'll get the 10 years, or 15 years, or whatever it is that the city council decides is a fair thing. That does, then, then, in 15 years, they probably will come to the city. But it gives you a leeway, I think that's a fair thing.
I was thinking 10 years, or...
Or, yeah, well, that development may not come in 10 years.
Eric?
I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable with delay, I'm really cognizant of, of the precedent this would set for how the city deals with properties on its border. On the other hand, I'm sensitive to the fact that the people who have, who are living in this area are going to see tax increases right away without any improved, well, they are going to have an improved service, because I honestly believe they're going to get better fire protection. I, I, with all due respect to the Carroll addition, I think that Urbana will get there faster than a volunteer fire department will, and I think you will see, probably, if your insurance company is appropriately receptive to that, you will see a reduction in that. But one of the things that I'm, I'm thinking, we do have precedents, we often give tax incentives to, I mean, the whole tax increment financing thing, is we, we, we sweeten the pot in the hope of more tax revenue. Now, always, that, that's negotiated, we sort of don't give it, we typically don't give something for nothing. But I wonder if in this case, I, we might consider the immediate annexation, but a, a tax forgiveness for a number of years, or a phasing in of the increased taxes to compensate for the fact that they're maintaining, I, I think the big thing is, they're maintaining their septic systems and they, while, while they don't have sanitary service. So, so I think some compensation for that in terms of reduced taxes, I think the, those dollars, we, we, I don't want to say that we don't need all the dollars we can get, but I think that particular amount of money is going to be more important to them than it is to us in these next few years. So, so I'd rather go in that direction than actually go in a direction of delaying the annexation.
Carol?
I certainly would like to know from legal and from neighborhood services, the impact of that kind of change in a long-term plan. Because it was done 20 years ago, you expect a plan to be carried out at some point 20 years later, and this kind of change precludes that from happening. And then, of course, the precedent that Mr. Jacobson just recommended, is how many other people would, on the outskirts, would say, "Wait a minute, you can abate my taxes too, I'm out here maintaining my own..." You know, it's, that's a huge precedent to set in a city, to do such a thing. So, I'm concerned about that overall. I agree that we could move this back to January so that we'll have time to answer some of these more critical questions that need to be put forward before we make a decision on this particular plot going forward. But I understand now that the annexation agreement itself was already accepted, but what we are looking at is actually now moving in on the, the six properties that we need to, to decide upon.
Eric, and then we, we need to move forward on this.
So, the, the only thing I would say about, about my precedent is that, you know, with respect to it, some tax abatement for a few years, is that in the previous annexations, since I've been on the council anyway, they've been annexations associated with surround. And so, because they've, we've got them surrounded, we're ready to plug sanitary sewer right in, here, we're not ready to do that right away. So, I think that the fact that there's a, a very substantial benefit that's not going to be ready right away, should, should perhaps suggest that we, we should, we, we should give some, some tax relief on that basis.
Those incentives are usually negotiated at the time of development approval. So, that's, I mean, we can certainly look at it, but this is a completely, this is a complete departure from standard annexation procedures. You negotiate the annexation prior to development approval, it's, cat's already out of the bag. So, that's why I'm a little bit confused, but, you know, we'll, we'll look, and there's a lot of law that covers this too, a lot of case law, a lot of procedures. There's a limit to the creativity. So, maybe the city is just not, it is late, maybe the city is just not ready, the city council is not ready to act on the agreement and annex these, this territory for whatever And the opportunity is going to, is kind of quick, maybe it comes and passes this council, and, you know, maybe there's reasons why we would divert from our normal path in that way. To me, that seems a more likely outcome than trying to create an agreement where we've sort of lost our leverage already, so.
Have we annexed subdivisions or properties that did not have sanitary sewer service or water before?
I'm sure we have, but I'll have to look at that, and, you know, some have one, but not the other.
Okay.
But there's all different types of circumstances of annexation.
All right. Well, we can either keep this in committee until January 13th, or we can entertain a motion on this particular parcel. Carol?
I will move that ordinance number 2013-12-106 remaining in committee until January 13th, allowing for legal as well as community development to look at the impact of not annexing at this point.
Second.
Any other discussion? Eric?
Yeah, I'll, I will, I will oppose postponing the annexation. I think we can provide some consideration, but I, I really do believe that we should annex.
Okay. All those in favor of keeping this item in committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay. The ayes have it. All right. Moving on to ordinance number 2013-12-107, we have an ordinance...
I'm going to move to extend time to 11:30.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, if you do that, once you get past 11, you have to make sure that the front door remains open.
Yep. We'll, we'll be quick.
Whether you're quick or not, if the building is considered locked at 11 o'clock, then all proceedings after that are in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
We'll be watching the front door. Okay. All right. Up, next up is ordinance number 2013-12-107, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at 610 South Glover Avenue, which is the Barnes Mobile Home Park. Bill Gray.
Thank you. For the last four years or so, city staff have been negotiating with representatives of this property on South Glover Avenue, which is immediately adjacent to city-owned property. Staff believes that this is an opportunity to acquire a one-acre parcel that, because it's adjacent to existing city land, that in the future, it would be important if and when there were public works or other departments' needs identified for space, et cetera. The details of the contract are in the memo. The purchase price is $113,000. We immediately would need to do a Phase One environmental to check to be sure that the site is clean.
Mr. Smythe?
Move to send to council the recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And I'm hoping the next three items are all together, right?
Well, no. According to our city attorney, we...
No, we can send them all, but we'll vote on them individually at council.
You didn't vote, you can vote on them individually, or you can take the second to, in omnibus fashion, but it's the same amount of time, because you're going to take two votes.
And we've already wasted time talking about it. So, ordinance number 2013-12-108 is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2013 to 14, which is for the Windsor Road Preliminary Engineering Agreement with IDOT, and that ordinance is on the very last page of the packet we were handed out.
I will discuss 9, 10, and 11 together, and hopefully answer any and all questions you may have. But, for some time now, and for newer council members prior to your term of office, staff has talked to council members about the peculiar road condition, composition of the concrete on Windsor Road, and due to the pavement distresses, we're left with the need to reconstruct that road between Race and Fila Road. The mayor's office and staff have been working hard, working with IDOT and other individuals to seek other funding opportunities, and recently, we had a interaction with IDOT representatives, and they're willing to help fund what I would call the first phase of a preliminary engineering study in the amount of $250,000. This would be 100% IDOT, no local match. We, coincidentally, were going through a consultant selection process for another project and felt that the time was of the essence, because they would like this study to be completed by early summer, so that they have a better cost estimate. And, anyway, we're wanting to expedite the process. And what I don't have before you tonight, but I'll put in the packet, in Thursday's packet, is more details on the scope of services for the engineering, professional engineering Phase One work. So, tonight, there's three things. The Budget Amendment Ordinance, which would be for the $250,000 received, which would be reimbursable. We would pay the consultants. IDOT would reimburse us 100%. Secondly, is the IDOT-City Agreement that identifies the money and how that money would be acquired and spent. Then, thirdly, is an engineering agreement, and I don't have all the details, as I mentioned, but will provide them when I have more information.
Charlie?
I'd like to move all three of these to council. I'll do them in order, 1, 2, 3. 12-108 to council, the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Okay, I move Resolution 2013-1255R to council, the recommendation for approval.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move Resolution 2013-1256R to council, the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we are up to ordinance number 2013-12-109, which is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, portions of real estate parcels with PI numbers 2515-34002, 2515-293002, which is the Squire Farm. And the second, never mind. Okay, we'll take that one first.
Okay. What's before you this evening is very similar to discussions we had a few weeks back regarding the Heimberger Farm tract. Basically, the Squire Farm tract is right-ofway that's required for the construction of Lopin Drive. Very similar details regarding the lease back this evening. We had a public hearing. There were no comments, but essentially, the land, until construction would start, would be farmable. We would give notice, and once construction began, this would be, where at least two of the lanes would be built between Apollo Drive and Lincoln Avenue. The portion of roadway, of right-ofway that would not be built upon could be farmed in the future if and when we would need those third and fourth lanes, which is fine from a city perspective, because that's less property we have to maintain, mo, et cetera. So, the other details, as far as the cost per acre, et cetera, are essentially identical to the previous Heimberger, Squire, Heimberger Farm tract acquisition.
Dennis?
I've moved ordinance...
Move ordinance number 2013-12-109 to city council with approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Bill?
I just wondered, of the $13 million, is there a budget for land acquisition separately?
It's included in the 13 million.
I mean, is there a separate line item for that? Are we getting close to exceeding that or anything?
No.
There's no line item?
We're not. We're fine.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next up is ordinance number 2013-12-110, which is an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain real estate, which is the portions of the real estate parcels with those same numbers. Squire Farm.
Move to send to council, the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Next up is ordinance number 2013-12-111, which is an ordinance authorizing the submission of a petition for annexation to the Board of Trustees of the Urbana and Champaign Sanitary District, 1210 East University Avenue and 901 North Smith Road. Bill Gray is back.
Okay, sorry. Here we are in the peculiar reverse role, where we're wanting to be annexed. But, anyway, this is all in response to, the landfill site is not technically in the sanitary district, corporate limits, if you will. We need for that to happen in order for us to do a leachate well, to pump that leachate to a sanitary sewer to be treated. This would help us with some leachate seeps we've had out there for many years, and although it's a fairly expensive project, there's cost sharing with our City of Champaign, as far as the Champaign-Urbana Soloway Disposal System entity that we've had in place for many, many years. So, that's what the action is here, is to allow the mayor to sign this petition so that we could be annexed to the sanitary district.
I'd move ordinance number 2013-12-111 be advanced to the full city council for approval.
Second.
Is that seconded by Charlie?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
Yes.
Discussion? Bill?
Just one question. Since we will be contributing water to the sanitary district, do they, will they charge us for that?
Oh, yes.
So, that would depend basically on how much it rains, right?
Well, to some degree, again, this is leachate or that groundwater in, within the landfill itself.
So, there'd be ongoing...
There's a nice, thick clay cap, and that clay cap is to prevent groundwater from seeping in, but there's still fluid in there. So, it's kind of related to the rainfall, but yes, we will pay, we'll be metered.
Do you have any estimate on how many cubic feet that is or anything?
I don't have that tonight to give you that amount, but we already have a similar process, collection treatment system that we did some years ago. It was about a million half dollars' worth of work, because we had serious erosion of the saline against a north wall of the landfill. And that is, again, treated and pumped to the sanitary district. And I can't imagine, it'd probably be less than what we're paying there, but I could find out those numbers if council needs to know. Yeah, but we will have to pay, yes.
All righty.
And if anybody ever wondered what the long-term costs of some of the things that we do, society are, cuss words, is a perfect example. It's been with us for a long time, and it's going to be with us for a continuous, for a much, many more years.
All righty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Last item on the agenda is ordinance number 2013-12-112, which was an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for CoFusion LLC, doing business as CoFusion, 701 Gregory Place, Suite F.
Madam Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Accepted.
Mo approval.
Second.
Moved by Carol, seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. With no further business before the committee, we are adjourned.